Good evening, calling to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the El Segundo City Council, Tuesday, February 20th. Please rise and Pastor Lee Carlisle from the United Methodist Church will give us an invocation and Mayor Pro Tem Boiles will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, I invite you to join me in prayer. Gracious God, there is work to be done tonight, but before the business of this meeting begins, we pause to give you thanks and to ask your blessing. We thank you for the family, friends, and neighbors who love and support us and whom we in turn support and love. We thank you for our homes and schools, for the many blessings that we share in this community, and for the democracy that is the foundation of our life together. As we begin this council meeting, we pray for those who lead us, for Mayor Fuentes, Mayor Pro Tem Boiles, and council members Brand, Dugan, and Perstuck. Brand them wisdom and energy for the work of this night. Bless their work and the good work of all who serve this city. Tonight, we are especially mindful of those whose lives were disrupted by the school shooting in Parkland, Florida, and we pray that the people of that community will receive comfort and strength. May this terrible incident remind us of how precious our young people are and encourage us to create a community that is safe, yes, but a community in which every child can thrive and develop to their fullness, in which everyone knows they can reach out to their neighbor. May it be so. Amen.
Pardon me, in our Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with purity and justice at all.
Thank you Pastor Carlisle and thank you Mayor Pro Tem. This evening, we have presentations. The first is the Treasurer's Quarterly Investment Portfolio Report, and I see our City Treasurer, Krista Binder.
Good evening Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Council Members. Krista Binder, City Treasurer. We heard, Dino and I are here tonight to present the Quarterly Investment Portfolio Report, ending December 2017. So this is a breakdown of our current portfolio, both short term and long term. We're at about a 1.2 year overall in average weighted maturity, considerable amount of funds still on the short term, which we consider the little bit about 52 days. Currently meeting the benchmark rate of return there. The longer term portfolio, a little bit under in terms of the rate of return. This is a, where you have a next, a new slide for the presentation, so when we show you these rates of return, it's based upon a one day shot in time static. We're continuously investing, so that's kind of, we have a better graphic that kind of shows our activity over the last three months. This slide shows that we are still in compliance with our investment policy. Next presentation, we're going to add one more section on here, which is our investment in super nationals. We also had a comply, we are in compliance with those investments as well, so we'll be adding that to this presentation. Those are some new purchases. This further breaks down our compliance with our medium term notes. These are corporate securities. We do not want to have more than 3% per issuer. This demonstrates our commitment to diversification. And then, this shows our slide of our educational activities, so we start the fiscal year in October. So, Dino and I will be attending the Government Investment Officers Association Annual Conference in March, and then I've also been asked to be a panelist for Faster Payments 2018, which is another conference in San Diego, with some work I did for a previous agency, but it's relative to what we're doing in Treasury today. This again shows our breakdown of our portfolios by asset type, and all the different asset types on the right hand side, the local agency investment fund, collateralized bank deposits, what we have with Plaza Bank, that's a local bank, our negotiable certificates of deposit, government obligations are Treasuries and agencies, and then the bonds are our medium term notes or corporate notes. This shows how the securities by maturity are laddered out over time. We continue on the right hand side to sort of ladder securities out. Based on the yield curve, the yield curve has gone higher on the short term, it's flattening on the longer term. They're both rising, but it's a little bit flatter, so we kind of shorten the maturity range to take advantage of some rising rates in like between the one and three years, and we'll show you that on the next graphic. And this is the change in the yield curve between the two reporting periods, ending September and then ending December. Good news is, rates rose finally across the board, so that was a pretty significant uptick from what we had been seeing, so rates are continuing to rise. I saw an article today that we're getting close to a 3% yield on the Treasury, so that's that's significant. And then this again just shows you how rates rise over time between when we first started. You can see like the one month rate at .03%, but as the feds have been raising rates and you go straight across, we're at 1.35. We've seen a lot of increases on the short term as opposed to some increases on the long term, but the short term is really catching up. Okay, this is a little bit of a busy slide, but this kind of demonstrates our investment activity. So you can see the two yield curves, the one green and ending September, the one red ending December. All of these blue dots are the purchase activity that we've had since October. So you can see how we're kind of clustering around that two to four year range, and then above the red line where we've been able to take advantage of higher yielding securities since that time. So I know Councilmember Dugan was at our last Investment Advisory Committee, so we've really been actively investing. We still have funds which are sitting idle that we're continuously reaching out, so I think we're, we kind of like this slide for ourselves because it just, it shows us how active we are and how much we're benefiting from some of these raising interest rates. And now I'd like to turn the presentation over to Dino to talk about cash flow and economic indicators.
Good evening. So the new part of this chart which you see every quarter is the October through December, which is traditionally where we have more cash outflows and inflows, especially October, November. This is our more lean time of the year. And comparing it to last year, you can see October, we had a slightly higher deficit, and the reason for that was a CARs payment of about 158,000 and then another 580,000 CalPERS unfunded liability payment for the miscellaneous group. And then in December, we were actually positive in cash flow, and part of that was the TOT, which is, we've seen an increase all year, and also with the new business license online, we started to get some more receipts in December, once people were able to go online and renew. Current activity, there's been quite a bit of activity as you could see from the previous chart with all the, the blue dots. Summarizing it, we purchased a lot of bonds and CDs, about 16 investments for 6.2 million, and had mature, 11 maturities of 5.6 million during the quarter, and then since December 31st, continued a lot with the corporates in the CDs, 11 investments for 3.7 million and one maturity for 1 million. And the great thing you can see here, the change on the interest rates of the invest, new investments versus the maturities coming off, is almost 1%. So we're really starting to see an increase in our yield, and we'll start to see more interest income in the next few months here. In addition to that 1%, that's on 3.2 million more in investments, so making a higher yield on more investments, and then still continuing to manage bank balances to control fees. And to that end, year to date, by keeping more money in life and investing it rather than leaving it in the bank to offset our fees, we earned almost $18,000 more because the life rate is so much higher than our earnings credit rate at the bank. And then as far as the economic indicators go, you can see the GDP prediction for this year and next year is a little bit higher than it was back in December, and some of that may be related to the tax cuts that were recently passed. Unemployment continues very low where it's always been, and inflation, you can see where at the end of last year, it ticked up above 2%. It dropped a little bit in the middle of this year, but now is back up pretty consistently above 2% and continues that way, so that leads us to the average Fed funds rate projections. Based on the unemployment and the GDP, the, and inflation, you know, we're looking at possibly three rate increases this year, maybe two next year, and possibly one the year after that, settling into a more longer run, 2.75 to 3% Fed funds rate. And that would be our presentation, if there were any questions?
Thank you, very informative as always. Our next presentation will be read by Councilmember Dugan.
Okay. We have a proclamation here for Discovering Engineers Week. Whereas Discovering Engineers Week is a celebration to grow awareness of our dynamic engineering profession and inspire middle school students to pursue careers in STEM through hands-on education, exposure to STEM professionals, and local outreach. And often the obstacles to connecting students to STEM and improving their interest and aptitude in STEM subjects are too great to relegate to teachers alone. And whereas Discover Engineers Week offers engineering companies a chance to partner with teachers and open our doors to highlight the incredible opportunities available in engineering, science, math, and technology. And Discover Engineers Week began as the first formal national call for engineers to volunteer, teach, and inspire STEM engagement in K-12 education, and whereas, the week's programs and activities work to amplify the voices of women and men in engineering and coordinate a chorus of STEM mentors who can help address students' questions, misconceptions, and challenges. Serving as a rallying point for a growing mass movement, Discover Engineers Week empowers engineers to come together around the work they so love and help their communities and future generations thrive. Now therefore, the mayor and the members of the City Council of the City of El Segundo, California hereby proclaim the week of February 18th to the 24th, Discover Engineers Week, and encourage all citizens to join in recognizing the important contributions of engineers to our daily lives. And accepting the presentation is Dan Nieman, the Manager of Corporate Responsibility, and Reyna Villanueva, Technical Services Project Manager.
And from North of Grumman, correct?
Correct. From North of Grumman.
My name again is Dan Nieman. I manage all of our corporate responsibility and K-12 STEM outreach for North of Grumman. As hopefully you all know, we've been part of this community since 1939, and a huge part of the work that we do is inspiring and the next generation of our workforce to pursue engineering or any STEM-based career as they move forward in their career. Discover Engineers Week is a, is a national, is actually a global celebration, both celebrating the great work our engineers do every day, but also inspiring that next generation of workforce. We know that this work that we do every day is incredibly complex, but we know that we also need to inspire incredible kids who do very similar complex work at the middle school and high school level every day to keep doing what they're doing and show them what engineers do every day. And so, say we had El Segundo High School here at our North of Grumman facility, they, for a couple hours, part of what they did was they matched one-to-one with a working engineer and shadowed them for the day. Thursday, El Segundo Middle School will be coming to our campuses and doing some hands-on STEM activities as well. So we are, it's a great opportunity to open our doors and welcome the community in, and so thank you very much for this recognition.
Thank you, Dan.
Dan and Reyna, thank you, and North of Grumman. I don't know if you know, I'm a 29-year employee, and anybody who's Facebook friends with me knows that I post every couple months. There are days that I don't understand why every kid doesn't want to be an aerospace engineer, because I had one of the most rewarding, fascinating careers, the countries I lived in, the rockets I launched, it's fabulous. If you know a bright young kid who has an interest, encourage them to explore, so thank you very much. Okay, and then our next is a very exciting presentation from YCR Chief coming up, and I know you're doing this at my request, thank you. I am a representative to the South Bay Cities Council of Governments, and a few months ago Lieutenant Mendoza gave us a spellbinding presentation with a couple of his team members. I mean, the other 15 cities were just blown away, so I asked him to come present tonight, so Chief.
Well, thank you Madam Mayor and City Council. It is my honor to introduce to you tonight Lieutenant Mendoza, who will introduce to you his counterparts at LA Impact. And at your request, they've come tonight to do a presentation. LA Impact is a group with whom we've had a great partnership through the years, and I know they're going to talk tonight about how we've leveraged that resource for the benefit of El Segundo, and they're also going to talk a little bit about some current trends that they've seen and some things that they're addressing to some extent, Councilmember Perstuck, that we've discussed as well. So, it's going to be a great presentation. I just wanted to just do the brief intro to Lieutenant Mendoza, he's going to come up and introduce those that are with him.
Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for having myself and my colleagues here today. Again, my name is Carlos Mendoza, I'm a 28-year member of the Police Department here. I currently oversee our investigative division. The last five years, I've also been assigned as a Deputy Director, LA Impact. I'm also proud to say I'm a 25-year resident of this city, and I continue to live here, I've been living here a long time, and I love having my family here, it's a great place to live. As we all know, we have a drug problem in our country, in our region, in our cities, across the entire country. LA Impact's mission is to impact and to target those drug trafficking and money laundering organizations within our Southern California area. I can say that every day that one of our Impact teams seizes a large amounts of narcotics off our streets, I know that we are saving a life somewhere in our community or somewhere else in the country. So with that, I'd like to introduce to you our interim director, Chuck Baylor, who's a cap, retired captain from the Gardena Police Department, and our Assistant Director, Special Agent in Charge from the California Department of Justice, Rego Berto Garcia.
Thank you, as he introduced me, I'm Chuck Baylor, I'm the interim director for LA Impact, and thank you for the opportunity to speak here and at the previous one, and I agree with you, the man is a rock star. Not the long hair, but he is a rock star, does a very good job for LA Impact. So, what I wanted to do is give you a brief introduction of LA Impact and what we do, not only for you, but for the audience here and on TV. LA Impact, as it says up here, stands as an acronym for the Los Angeles Interagency Metropolitan Police Apprehension Crime Task Force. Do you understand why we go by the acronym of LA Impact? Much easier. It was formed in 1991 by the LA County Police Chiefs, and what they formed at that time was an organization to go after the mid to major level cartels importing cocaine. The late 80s and 90s, early 90s, cocaine was the surge of Los Angeles County, coming in here and going out. So the chiefs collectively got together and formed this task force. The task force worked very well over the next 20 years, and in 2011, the task force evolved into a joint powers authority, and I'm sure you're familiar what that is. El Segundo was one of the founding members of that, but over time, as you can see up here, we have 44 different city governments that have joined LA Impact as part of the JPA, so we have a broad spectrum of the LA County cities that are members of our task force, all with the common purpose of going after large-scale drug trafficking and money laundering organizations. That's always been our focus. The drugs that they have imported have evolved over the years, before it was major cocaine, now it's evolved, and I'm sure you've seen the news, from cocaine, methamphetamine, to heroin, to fentanyl, to marijuana, if there's money to be made in illegal narcotics, it's coming across our border, hitting Los Angeles, hitting Southern California, and going all across the country, going across the continent, and even international. We have 44 member agencies, we also have partnerships with three federal government agencies. At any given time, the member agencies assign personnel like Lieutenant Mendoza to the task force fluctuates. A lot of it depends on the staffing for our member agencies, so it ebbs and flows. Right now, we're kind of short, but even with that, we have 20 different cities involved, including federal partners. Our governing board is 44 chiefs from the local agencies. The city manager appoints, who serves as the member agency representative. So, several times a year, we meet with our chiefs as our board, and we decide where our funding goes, where our priority goes, and how we can best serve our members. And as you'll hear of, one of the, some of the things that we've done over the years, service to our member communities is always key. We go after narcotics, but if a member agency has an issue, we're the first and ones to respond, so it's quite the resources. At any given time, we can have anywhere from 70 to 90 police officers assigned to our task force. So, it's ironic that our task force is larger than many of the member agencies we serve, but we're a force multiplier, and a member agency has an issue, come to their assistance. So as we get into what the task force has, I'm going to introduce Rego Garcia, who's our Assistant Director, and he's going to give you a little brief introduction on our different qualifications and things we can do.
Thank you Chuck. Before I hand it over to Lieutenant Mendoza, I wanted to cover some of our structure, and we're kind of structured like a police department. Currently, the interim director is Chuck Baylor, who just spoke, I'm the Assistant Director, I'm a Special Agent in Charge of California Department of Justice. Our Group Six, as you see up on the chart, is our administrative portion of LA Impact. We have five lieutenants from various agencies. Carlos Mendoza with El Segundo PD, Dennis Timm is Bell Gardens PD, Scott Swain Hawthorne, Tigran, I'm not going to pronounce his last name, Lando PD, and then Rich Burgoyne with LA Sheriffs. If you look under each lieutenant, I'll briefly touch on some of the, some of the teams and how we're broken down. Our Group 10 Coin Team is a team that focuses on our investigative resources and investigative sources of information. Our Group 13 DEC, Drug and Danger Children, it's a program we have within LA Impact. Whenever we have an investigation that involves children, we call our DEC team out, and they're a bunch of social workers, and they come out and they sometimes take the children and identify a proper housing for them, and then do an investigation on that respect. Our Group 18 is a gang team, also a surveillance and narcotics team. Our Group 4 is a surveillance team, also working narcotics, it's comprised of LAPD. Our Group 1 is much like 18 and 4, it's a surveillance and narcotics team. Our Group 16 is a partnership with the LA City Attorney. Our Group 24 is in Homeland Security Investigations Team, and they focus on narcotics as well. Our Group 25 is a Crime Impact Team, they focus on residential burglaries, Part 1 crimes, and bad folks that are out there. Our Group 12 is our LAPD and LA Sheriff's Lab Team, they're the ones that respond to any kind of meth labs or any clandestine labs that need to be dismantled. Our Group 22 is a Department of Justice meth team that focuses on methamphetamine. Our AB 109, it's basically a probation compliance team, our AB 109. Our Group 14 is our air support portion of LA Impact, housed at Pasadena in our aircraft. And then our Group 2 is another surveillance and narcotics team, housed in Laverne. And with that, I'll pass it over to Lieutenant Mendoza. As Director Bailo indicated, we work for the LA County Police Chiefs. So when any member agency from LA County calls LA Impact for help, we will go on and respond. And what I've done here is highlighted just the South Bay region of where LA Impact in 2017 responded for requests for assistance. The top four are just El Segundo, where we've called, our detectives have called me and said, "We need a team in order to accomplish a certain mission." In 2017, as you can see, we responded 93 times to member agencies throughout LA County. This involves anything from apprehending a violent suspect to surveillance on a burglary suspect. Like our Crime Impact Group 25 is now being used quite a bit because we all have a burglary problem within our jurisdictions. To go out to some of the trends, we talked about our Group 12. Group 12 is the only lab response team in LA County. That means they will respond to any BHO, butane honey oil labs, or explosions, along with fentanyl labs and methamphetamine labs, like what are called ICN labs. So our numbers continue to increase every single year. Last year, we were at about 50s, low 50s of lab response for LA County. Now, I'm highlighting here what our major narcotic problem is in our Southern California region. As you can see, methamphetamines continues to increase year by year by year. And we've had some ups and downs with some of the other narcotics. Opioids, even though it wasn't our high year, 2015 was our higher year, we are discovering more fentanyl now, higher pure, higher-grade fentanyl that is mixed in with regular heroin. We haven't started to separate that yet, but I think in 2018, we would have more of a separation of seeing how many pounds of fentanyl we are seizing versus pounds of So our problem here in Southern California, at least in our region, is methamphetamines. Over 4,000 pounds of methamphetamines seized in Southern California, in our region, last year. As you can see, 157 of our 350 cases last year were methamphetamines cases, almost half of our cases. Money laundering. Los Angeles is the epicenter for narcoidollars money laundering. All that money that needs to go back to the Mexican cartels, the majority of it comes through Los Angeles. This was evident in this operation, two-and-a-half-year investigation we did in partnership with HSI, where one day, over $90 million cash was seized in various locations through LA County. Over $140 million total seized that one day. To date, this is the largest single-day bulk cash seizure in the history of the U.S. Treasury. So that right there was evident how much drug dollars are actually coming through our region, through Southern California, and down into Mexico. And that is it for our presentation. We're available for questions, if any of you have any?
Thank you. Thank you for the work you do. My colleagues have some questions or comments. I know that we were blown away at the cog. What you do is so important, and people think El Segundo doesn't have a drug problem, but we know that there's drugs out there, and we know that they're going after our young people, and that's why organizations like RODE are important. But what you do is essential because you're trying to cut it off at the source. And you're responsible for a lot of people going to prison.
Absolutely.
Do you have any of those statistics of?
About looking at our arrests.
I got statistics.
You saw our statistics for arrests over the years. We were high for one year at around 600. 2017, it was around 420. But what we really have focused is on, like you said, prosecutions. We have focused on quality cases and putting the worst of the worst in jail. What we didn't say we do is we don't go after users. I want to highlight that what we go after is the importers, the distributors, the cartel-level people that are bringing the problems into our communities. That's always been our mission, and it stays that way. Not about users or people with problems. It's the worst bringing into it. So yes, we're doing very well on the prosecutions and trying to identify the worst of the worst.
How can we help you?
It's always through your support. And just like El Segundo and the other communities that we serve, a lot of the organizations are suffering from recruiting and retaining law enforcement. So our value and our contributions come from the member agencies that assign personnel. So we would always ask for your support, which you have given for many years, continued support of being able to assign quality people to our task force. And what we provide back to the cities through assignments of your personnel are enforcement off these drug traffickers. But what we also give back, like Carlos, is a better educated, a better rounded, a better knowledgeable law enforcement officer, because we deal in all different types of environments. If someone comes from El Segundo, we service all four counties through our HIDA program. They get to go out and see the rest of the world. They interact with city councils, so they become more well-rounded, they can supervise, and they can manage better. So you guys benefit it, so do we. So it's a good partnership.
Yes. When Lieutenant Mendoza supports something like this, it takes away from our city, but we know that the return on our assets employed is, you know, 10 times what we get back and what our region does. So we're grateful and proud of Lieutenant Mendoza. And both of you gentlemen, and questions, comments?
Just a real quick one. Fully support our involvement in this, and I want to contribute to that. How does this get paid for? Is that out of the, how are the people paid? I'm just curious.
The assigned personnel, which is a majority of the cost for the task force, falls on member agencies.
Okay, so.
You cover his salary.
And we're glad to do that.
What I had to do was cover overtime. And if there's special equipment, we buy it. How LA Impact is funded is, one, through grants. We're part of the HIDA program, which comes through the President's office, and then through asset forfeiture. That's a touchy situation, but the way we enforce it, we're going after the cartels. Like you saw on the slide, you're talking millions of dollars. When that money is seized through the courts, it's allowed to come back to law enforcement to go right back after them to enforce it. So a good part of our funding is through the criminals. Thank them for that part of it. But the rest, the key part, is through the city, or the member cities, through the support of assigning personnel to us. Without those, we don't exist. So that's how you can support LA Impact. And like I said, this council has done it for many years, and we appreciate it.
Counterintuitive to me that the meth seems to be the problem as opposed to opioids, based on everything you read. So is part of the issue that it's easy to identify meth labs due to the smell? Like, I guess where are the opioids coming into the market? Because it seems like such an epidemic at the local level, state, and national. So I was surprised to not see that as more of a stat.
We just came back from DC attending a HIDA conference, and it was kind of interesting when they showed a map of the country. It was west of the Mississippi is where all the meth is being imported. East of the Mississippi, it's where the heroin and fentanyl. I was a little shocked at that. What I was not shocked is about our stats, is LA County, the methamphetamine has been imported in huge bulk. One of the slides he didn't show you, five years ago, methamphetamine was selling for $8,000 a pound. It's now at 1,800, dropped by like 70%. And our seizures have doubled. So west of the Mississippi, the whole area, especially LA, is being flooded with methamphetamine. It's cheap, it's potent, and that's what a lot of people are going after. Fentanyl is still an issue, still sees it. It's just not as big as methamphetamine. And the drug cartels are in it to make money. They're going to send whatever they can where they can generate the most money, and that's what we're combating. You'll see it in our stats, where a couple years, cocaine's way up here, heroin is down here, and they'll bounce back and forth. But methamphetamine has just been skyrocketing. So it's more plentiful, and it's cheaper. Wish most businesses were that way, we'd all be doing better.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah.
Well, thank you, and I applaud the work.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Persick?
Here.
Councilmember Brand? Councilmember Dugan?
Here.
Mayor Protemboils?
Here.
And Mayor Fuentes?
Here. So now is the time for public communications, related to city business only. I'm thinking people might be here to talk on two items. So is anybody here for the public hearing about the rate increases? One per, okay, for that, okay. So when we get to item one, then it will be your time, if you want it to be part of the public record. And so how many people are here to speak in public communications now? Keep your hands up because we're going to count. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. Is that what everybody else counts?
11 or 12, yeah. Close enough.
13, 14. Okay, so we're going to do two minutes a person. That brings us to the half-hour time limit that we have here. So please state your name when you come to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. My name's Mo Dolly. I'm a resident here in El Segundo for about two years. I'm also an employee. I'm an engineer at DirecTV, now AT&amp;T, about five years. So I'm here today to speak about one of the parks, Campus El Segundo, the soccer field over on Mariposa and Nash. So we've been playing soccer out there during our lunch breaks for about five years, and also other times throughout the week. So it's been going pretty well, but basically a year ago, we started charging $5 to get in, which is not a problem, where, you know, we're happy to pay it, and we reserve the field on a weekly basis. So the reason I'm here today is because it's come to our attention that March 1st, the city's planning on closing the field during the day. So I'm basically just here to ask that the field remains open so we can get out there and exercise during the day. And not only for us, my request would actually be that, since it's a park, it remains open for everybody. You know, there used to always be kids out there playing all the time. Now nobody's out there, except for us, since we're paying on a weekly basis. I have started a petition for this. It's been less than a week. We already have over 150 signatures. So apologies if your email has been getting flooded about that. You should see some stuff about that in your email. So yeah, that's it. That's my request, to keep the field open for us to get out and get exercise during our lunch breaks.
No comment at the end of the opening.
My name is Linda Cohen, and I am the Director of Marketing for the South Bay Music Association, which you may have known over the years as El Segundo Concert Band. And I'm here to make sure that everybody in El Segundo and South Bay knows about two upcoming events that are being put on by the South Bay Music Association. One is Comedy Night, and I'm sure you've seen these flyers around, and I have many more, as many as you like. This is the ninth year that the high school, the El Segundo High School Band, has their largest fundraiser in February. It's Comedy Night, and we have professional comedians. We have an awesome silent auction, and it's really a great show. Since I only have two minutes, I will move on. And please come. And it costs $20 a ticket and $25 at the door, but it's one of our spectacular events of this, in this area, because we do get professional comedians, and it's an awful lot of fun. If anybody's been there before, they know what to expect. And I thank you for your support. Now, that's the second item that we're having. Oh, by the way, that's February 24th, which is Saturday. I don't know how that happened. It got here so fast. Saturday, the doors open at 5:30, and the show is at 7:00. But we want people to come early so they can eat. We have a lot of food, we have a lot of wonderful desserts, and we have the silent auction, which is going to take you a while to look at, because we've collected a number of items. I think you'll like it. The other event is the South Bay, is the El Segundo Concert Band. And we're very excited about this epic music concert, which you can, you can get flyers outside. There are flyers outside in the, hi Susan. Anyway, this is so exciting to me, because I happen to be at the practices, and I really think they just get better and better and better. Please join us for free, March 3rd, at 7:00 PM. Both events are at El Segundo Performing Arts Center at the high school. Thank you for your time.
Hi, good evening. Ryan Baldino, I live on East Palm here in El Segundo. I'm here to talk about the RFP for the Lakes Task. The Lakes, I'm on the task force, currently serving on that. I'm here to say this council should not rush the procedure of the RFP. Task Force has identified the need to hire a third-party consultant to do a facilities assessment to find out what's really needed. Yes, we have some numbers from staff, but they're called WAGs, they're guesses. We have a great report for the greens in the bunkers by a third-party consultant who knows what they're doing. We should do the same for the facilities. This staff recommendation is asking how much money the city's going to put in to the Lakes for renovations. Well, first, we should know what needs to be done before we start sending out an RFP. And with respect to the $5 million loan, it is irresponsible to discuss giving, forgiving a $5 million loan, because it's taxpayer money that has been invested into an enterprise fund. The golf course should be successful enough to not only maintain itself and make money for improvements, but also repay that debt to the city and repay that debt to the general fund. So in closing, I want to appeal to you to do the right thing. This process is supposed to be an open and transparent process. The task force has questions. Let us do our job, get the information, and send out a proper RFP. Let that RFP come back. And don't forget, the task force, we read a table of contents. We never got to see this RFP that's before you. And once we approve it, it should go to the city attorney. I'm sure he's going to have a couple of comments. So the idea of rushing this so that it's voted on after the election, but before the new council gets on, I think is inappropriate.
Evening, Council. Ron Swanson, I live on California Street. I'm here on the RFP also. I think it's inconscionable that this council would even think about doing this RFP at this time. You're rushing it. The way I read this, you're asking a firm to submit a multimillion-dollar deal, about 30 days' preparation time. If I was them, I'd say you're nuts. It just, it's not feasibly possible for somebody to do that, especially since you don't even know what the needs are over there right now. The time to stop with the petty personal desires of you on this council is now. Do not put your finger, your thumb on the scale. You're going to want to approve this process April 17th, a week after the next council will be elected. They won't be seated. And then you're going to sit up there, and you're going to agree to something that we could be into 20 years or better, and then put your key down and walk out the door? One of you are leaving this town, the other is going to be still staying here and live with this decision. And you're going to have to live with that. There's a reason that people are running in this town for council. This is one of them. So you shouldn't put your finger on the scale and wait it and try to rush this process. On top of that, I look at the timeframe. It has to go to the city attorney after the task force looks at it. That's a period of a day and a half or two days? And then you're going to put the RFP out? That doesn't work in my book. But you just, don't rush it. If you want to do the RFP, great, but take your time doing it. We've got into this about six, six and a half years. You want to do this in about six to seven weeks. In fact, your own staff report says it's eight, six to eight weeks for a process. That would be minimum.
Time's up.
Lindsay Breeden, 1005 East Walnut. I'm also here to discuss the RFP for the Lakes. As a member of the Technology Committee, I've been witness to what happens when you rush the RFP process and create a tiny window for companies to respond. For the Recs and Parks software selection, the time to respond was significantly less than the recommended window. Thus, only two companies responded to the RFP. As a result, we were left with two subpar options to replace the software that was nearing end-of-life and vital to city operations. Fast forward a few months, here we are again, going against best practices by trying to rush an RFP through at light speed, but this time, there's no deadline. So where is the fire? We took five years to decide on Topgolf, why on earth would we try to accelerate the process, especially when the Lakes Task Force was created specifically for this purpose to help guide the city? The only reason that I can see that we are rushing this through is some on this council want to make the decision on what happens before they leave office. We are fortunate to have two council members that live in town, have children that go to school here, and have vested interests in the future of El Segundo. Mayor Fuentes, it's probably the worst-kept secret in El Segundo that you will be completing your move to Idaho the day that your term's up. I'm curious why you should be able to weigh in on such an important matter for our city. Councilmember Dugan, you were very vocal previously about the lack of an RFP process for the Lakes, yet we have this task force made up of brilliant residents not being utilized. And here it is, trying to be rushed through, and all the people, you of all people should be stopped, should be fighting to stop them from expediting the process. If you choose not to fight... If you choose not to fight, then your lasting message is clear. Anything to kill Topgolf, even going against your own beliefs. Rushing this RFP process looks terrible from an optics standpoint. This isn't about Topgolf not passing. It certainly shouldn't be about forgiving a $5 million loan, which I cannot even believe is a discussion. It's about right and wrong. I encourage the council to do the right thing, go through the normal process, and let the decision be made by the incoming council. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Rotolo. I live at 640 Maryland Street. I'm here to speak about the RFP being considered for the golf course. We happen to be in an economic time where there are many opportunities in businesses all over this country. I'm a general contractor. We find that going out to get bids is much more difficult. We have to make a lot more calls because everybody's busy and everyone's got all these great opportunities to spend their time with. So the fact that we're trying to get an RFP out quickly economically to me doesn't make any sense. You know, we hear and see it in the newspaper every day, business is thriving. So let's, I think we should take our time, do it right, make sure that every possible opportunity out there is considered for this great source of land and recreation that we have. There's been a park survey that's been out there to be done, that's been done. There's a lot to be studied and taken in on that. We need to digest this and do it the right way. So please consider that in your decision. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Fuentes. My name is Lee Davis, 204 West Sicamore. I'm a 55-year resident, the vice chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission, member of the Aquatics Commandee, board member of the South Bay Sports, Health and Recreation Foundation, and currently on the golf task force. The reason why I mention those things is because being fairly involved in this, I've tried to do a really good job at whatever I put my name to. And when the task force was created, I really wanted to see to it that we go and do a thorough job. We spent, you know, we're in year six of trying to figure out what we're going to do with this golf course, and just in the last six to eight weeks, I think it's been, that we're being asked to do basically what should have been done the last five years. So as we go through this, we were really good at looking at the current condition. We looked at the course. We got golf maintenance solutions to go through and itemize $900,000 worth of stuff that needs to be done in, you know, immediately to five years from now. We've been able to look at it with a $5.6 million debt, and that's a chunk of change that I don't think we have to just throw away. The current, I won't even talk about the current contract, even though they've done everything they can, everything that we've asked them to do because the contract didn't thoroughly address our needs. As we go and we look at the clubhouse, we still have identified a lot of things that it needs, which is great for the people who are bidding. We still don't have a firm understanding of the termites, how bad the damage is from the last 20 years. Not that it's going to be doomed today, but what is it going to be like in the next 10 years? This contract's going to go 20. These people who are bidding have to have a firm understanding of what they're getting themselves into so that the city isn't responsible for that debt or that liability. The roof needs replacement or repair. We're not sure about that. We don't have a solid number on that for people. If we don't give them the information, these people are going to have to go on their own and get it. So as the task force, we'd like to see that we have people that are responsible, that are giving us solid numbers and solid information for these people to make informed bids. The last thing is a sewer system, which hasn't even been talked about, and it's been shut down due to root blockage, and that sits underneath a firm concrete structure.
Time's up.
So please, do the right thing.
Hello, Mayor Fuentes, council members. Lance Rawls, Virginia Street, 14 or 15-year resident. It's, this is getting redundant, I'm sure, at this point. Obviously, you're talking about the RFP. There's, I read at least 28 emails here or so, all wondering why we're rushing this process. I think that's my question to all of you, is why are we expediting this process? Being someone that's been on both sides of the RFP, you want to have all the facts possible in an RFP to get the right answers. If you respond to an RFP, as I've done in the past, I'm sure many of you have as well in your lives, if you don't have all the facts in there, you have to put assumptions in, you have to assume other things, you have to increase the cost of what you're putting into it. You don't give your best foot forward when there are those questions. We need to answer those questions. And on the $5 million thing, absolutely no way we should do that. It was meant to be there. The Lakes was meant to make money and pay that back. Some, a lot smarter people already explained that, but there's no way in this town where we have all the debts we have with pensions, all the debts going on, our schools looking to improve themselves and work, that we should be looking at that. And again, I guess really the question is, why are we rushing this with insufficient info? Is my question to all of you when it's time. Thank you.
Hi there, Michelle Keldorf, 736 Bungalow Drive. I've been here previously speaking in favor of Topgolf, and while that opportunity was denied, there was a real sense afterwards that people on both sides of the issue felt comfort in the RFP process, knowing that there was a group of residents, peers, and commission members, people, a task force that was approved by council to really look into this issue, that that would create a level of transparency and do the due diligence and the research necessary to get the highest quality bids out there so that the community could understand what the opportunity would be if it's not Topgolf. If it is, maybe there are some other more viable options that we hadn't even considered yet. But it really did create this opportunity for public involvement to at least understand what our options would be. And for all of the reasons that have already previously been stated, rushing the process really would reduce the quality of the offers received. And it's just, it really is a disservice to the community. There's a real opportunity here to gain a great deal of public respect for the process, and I think it's a time where we're facing some really difficult choices. And what the community wants is an opportunity to weigh in on, you know, where we're going to make those choices. And this seems like a great chance for you all to let everybody know that they've been heard. So I hope that you do take all of the points that have been raised today and take the time to really put out an RFP that has the thought behind it and the time for everybody to do their due diligence. Thank you so much for your time.
Hi, I'm John Goot, a 50-year resident of El Segundo. I'm also on the RFP task force. Mayor Fuentes, Protem Doyle's and Boils, and everybody else on the city council, thank you for listening to me tonight. I think, I asked at the last RFP meeting about the loan, and looking at that, I was saying, I just wanted to hear that from the council, that indeed this is a loan that's to be repaid or not. And from an accounting perspective, I'm not sure about repaying a loan as opposed to revenues coming into the city and how that affects the books. I just asked the question. So I apologize for maybe pausing a lot of this in reading all of the comments and seeing all of the comments about the loan itself and not forgiving the loan. But I just asked the question, and I wanted to hear it from the city council. And thank you very much.
Chris Basie, 622 Arena Street, resident for about six years. I'm here to speak as somebody who is happy that you guys killed the Topgolf deal. I didn't think the Topgolf deal was set up correctly. It was a backdoor deal with a single person without an RFP. I didn't think the economics made a lot of sense. I didn't think that we were utilizing one of our county, our city resources well. This is not the way to respond to that, though. Rushing this process just makes it look like it was a personal thing. And what we need is a council that acts with the strength of character that it took to walk away from a lot of pressure on a bad deal. Let's not set ourselves up for another bad deal. Let's take the time to make the RFP process well. Let's take the time to gain the confidence of the city residents. And as the task force and other people have mentioned, give the people who are going to come and give us RFPs the right amount of information to give us a clean RFP. Thank you.
Josh Alpert, El Segundo resident. I also feel that it's extremely important here. Hopefully, we're nearing the end of this process after, actually now closer to six years. But regardless of the process being flawed from the get-go, and I think it has been, this is the time to make sure that we get the process right, regardless of what it comes to at the end. There's a lot of people on the task force, there's a lot of people in this community who understand portions of what has happened in the past. There's a lot of different perspectives on what should happen moving forward, but it's extremely critical that we do the diligence necessary to make sure we understand the current facility as it is and all the options that are in front of us moving forward so that we can not make the mistakes of the past and continue on any type of direction that way. Let's make sure that we understand what it is, and let's truly look at all of the options moving forward so that the decision that's made, whatever it is, is truly in the best interest of El Segundo, all factors being factored. Thank you.
Hi there, Chris Pimentel. I live on West Maple. I've been here six years. A dovetail on the last comments made and say that there is another risk that comes from accelerating the task force process and the RFP process, and that is it creates a temptation to have a council measure conducted in a lame duck session. Whenever you have measures that are enacted in a lame duck session, there are always two outcomes if the issue is contentious, and that is always a lawsuit and is always voted dissatisfaction. History has lessons of this, whether it's 1801 with Thomas Jefferson having to go back and sue against the Adams administration and Marbury v Madison to the end of the last presidential administration with 3,800 measures conducted in the lame duck to begat 10,000-plus lawsuits. These things always end the same way, with voters who feel like they lose confidence in the process and turn to referendum, or voters who look to the process and say, why are we spending money on specious lawsuits? But I ask you to please adhere to the task force process we agreed to previously, let them do their work and make sure we get the measure right irrespective of what that outcome may be.
Any comments? Any other, one more comment?
Back on that task force thing. My name's Marie Smith. I've lived in El Segundo for 32 years, and I am a golfer. I want to speak to your rate increase at the Lakes. We play the Lakes, and we also play the Manhattan Beach, or R3 nine-hole course.
All right, I don't mean to interrupt the speaker, although just for record, there's going to be a public hearing on this item after public communications are closed.
Oh, okay.
You'll have each opportunity to speak.
Would you like for me to wait?
Well, that way it'll be part of that public hearing process.
Okay, why don't I just wait?
Okay, thank you. Any other public communications?
Hi, good evening, Rich Long, over 40-year resident. I'm just learning about this RFP, and I think the RFP needs to take time. Most RFPs take much longer than six, eight weeks. Usually, an RFP takes a couple of weeks in response to the people who are responding to it, to ask questions. I think this is a long process. After sitting through the Topgolf and following it in the paper through council for the last five or six years, I think this is something that needs to take due diligence, understand what's going on, understand what the community wants, and take the time and do it right. It's going to, it's going to take a long time to live through these 20 years, and this is the first I've heard about the loan as well. So vet it out through the community, potentially with the new council, but just a six to eight week process is very short for any multimillion-dollar RFP. Thank you.
Any other comments? Going once, twice, three times? Public communications are closed. Council comments?
The gentleman from DirecTV, I just, when we talked about, we had, we have a problem on that campus a lot as a coach of soccer, and there is a problem with people using the field and a lot of wear and tear. I think the Recs and Parks Commission did their best to develop a solution to keep it closed. I don't recall discussing specifically, although we talked about our workforce and the employers and their use of the facilities, I don't think our intent was to exclude people from using it. So maybe there's something that we can look at through the Recs and Parks Commission and Meredith's staff to come up with some kind of compromise perhaps, but I don't think that was the original intent. But we do have a lot of walk-ons that have used the facility. In fact, there was an incident in the last couple of weeks. El Segundo PD had to be brought out, and not an employer in town, but nonetheless, an instance where a child could have been compromised potentially. So it has been a concern, but I don't think that was our intent, was to shut out some employers vocally. Thank you for that.
And I also think it was the expense of having one or two staff members, because usually a single staff member there, and maybe to double the workforce.
I think there wasn't enough use going on to justify keeping it open, and there were security issues, and there's the wear and tear issue. But if we have employers whose employees wish to use that facility, I think the best first step would be for Meredith to speak with those folks to see if there's a compromise as far as limited hours or certain days of the week when potentially it could be available for that use.
Thank you. Okay, and I think we'll probably respond to all the RFP questions when we get to that item on the agenda. So procedural motion, consideration of a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only?
So move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero. Special Order of Business, public hearing. This is the time and place fixed for a public hearing regarding adopting a resolution establishing a fee schedule for the use of city electric vehicle charging centers. That might be the wrong one. Consideration of possible action to open a public hearing and receive testimony concerning adopting a resolution approving fee increase for golf course and driving range at the Lakes at El Segundo, 400 Salsa Pulva de Boulevard, as recommended by the Golf Course Subcommittee and Recreation and Parks Commission. Fiscal impact, estimated annual review increase of $65,000 to $70,000 to the Golf Course Enterprise Fund. City clerk was proper notice of a hearing given in a timely manner.
Yes, it was.
And has any written communications been received regarding this public hearing?
None has been received.
Okay, so the public hearing is now open, and Mr. Carpenter will make the presentation?
Meredith Pettit, our Director of Recreation and Parks, will make the presentation. Council members Purstuck and Dugan also have been working on this issue with the golf task force, I'm sorry, the golf subcommittee, and they likely have some comments or information as well.
Thank you very much. Good evening, city council. All of the information has been publicly noticed. As the city clerk had mentioned, it's been in the Herald newspaper for the last two Thursdays, and it's in your packet as well. Basically, as you know, city staff, the volunteers on our committees, our commissions, the golf management company, and all of their employees have really been working together over the last few months to identify some long-term solutions as well as short-term solutions for increasing the financial, the financials at the Lakes and making sure that the Lakes is operating comparatively with other courses. So this is a result of one of those solutions being brought to the city council, and an analysis and evaluation has been done, some benchmarking with other courses, and the fees proposed here today are different. They're basically ranging between a dollar and $2, depending on weekday and weekend rates, and then a couple of dollars on some of the buckets of balls. But basically, we feel staff, the golf course subcommittee, the Recreation and Parks Commission, both of those groups have approved these fee rate changes, and we feel that they're fairly nominal increases. The last time the fees were increased was in 2013, so going on about five years. And the reasoning for that time period is obviously just the uncertainty of knowing what the Lakes would look like. So we felt during that time that it wasn't the right time to raise fees. So the fees are in front of you, and if you have any specific questions, I can definitely answer those. Oh, before I give the mic back, I do want to make note of one minor revision since the published materials and in your packet, and there's a copy in front of you separately, and that was a minor typo. It's highlighted on your copy towards the bottom for the driving range discount keys. The birdie is the only proposed change in that section, and it's $60 for $75 worth of driving range balls.
Thank you. So the public hearing is now... So the public hearing is now open for public input, and this will be the time, Ms. Smith.
Hey, you're Marie.
Thank you for waiting.
I think I know you.
Again, my name is Marie Smith. I've lived in El Segundo for 32 years, and I play golf. So does my husband, and so do both of my children. So we're very familiar with the golf courses around here, and in my opinion, you are not raising the rates enough. $1 for a round-up golf increase is not a big enough increase. We just heard the city treasurer say that probably we're going to have some inflation. People are going to complain because you raised the fees. No matter what you do, they're going to complain, so why not go ahead and raise them a couple of bucks? The other thing I would like to suggest is to lower the juniors fees. Lots of people like to take their kids out to teach them how to play golf at these smaller golf courses. Along about the third or fourth hole, your child will decide that he's had enough of golf for one day, and then you're walking off the golf course. So don't charge as much for the juniors, but charge a little bit more for adults. So also, we play both the Lakes and the Manhattan Beach course. They're very, very similar, and I do know that the Manhattan Beach course is private, the Lakes, which is a public course, but they're very, very similar, so I wouldn't expect the rates to be that much different between the two courses. So that's my input, and I thank you for allowing me to share it with you.
Thank you. Okay, any more input? May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero. Thank you. Council discussion?
We worked with, Meredith said it, we worked with the contractors that are running the facility and some survey information, and John was part of that too. We went through what other courses are charging in the area and trying to be consistent with what the competition is around us, and here in Marie, you know, talking about, we're not raising it enough, we're raising it relative to our competitors around us. We're in step with them, so I'm comfortable with what we're proposing here as a fee increase because, you know, the way that the numbers were determined was by competitive analysis of the facilities around us, so I think that's the smart thing to do.
I asked the same question that you did, Ms. Smith, when I got the fees. I thought they weren't being raised enough, and then was told the logic behind it. I like the idea of the lower junior fee.
What's the most comparable course? I mean, Westchester is city-run, 18 holes, right? Probably similar condition? And they're at $2,550 weekday? Rancho Park is also city-run, isn't it? City of LA?
Yeah.
I don't know why that one's so much less, but in terms of a per-hole cost. I don't know, I think, I think you're on to something. I think a dollar just seems, to go through all this hassle after five years for a dollar increase seems like it's not worth the effort, especially when you look at how these other courses compare. Westchester and the Marriott, for example. And I'm looking at Westchester mostly because that is a public course, and it's the most you're either going to go to, if we didn't have the Lakes, you're going to go to Marriott or Westchester most likely. In my experience, raising prices generally on an annual basis, 3% to 5%, like most businesses, especially when all of our costs are increasing, all these government mandates to increase wages at the minimum wage level and above, additional workers' comp insurance rates, all the things that we're facing, just like private sector, I don't know how we couldn't justify raising it more, actually.
So some of the things we are also looking at is some opportunities of doing a membership, like so coming up the membership fee so that you, you register for the, like on a, and you put your, like a gym membership. So I know this was just the beginning stages of some of the initiatives that we wanted to increase, but we're also looking some up with opportunities to come up with ways to enhance the revenue at the golf course.
But wouldn't a membership make less, less money?
Not necessarily.
Because people would be getting discounts?
Not necessarily. So the membership would be like a gym, so you would register for the month and you would come and play, so generally, most people end up not showing up as much as they would have if they, rather than paying at every time you go.
I thought we had something like that here, a monthly fee.
Very limited, though. We, yeah, but we don't, we don't sell that many of them. It's, it's very limited.
I guess what I struggle with is estimates I heard are less than 5% of our residents use this on a regular basis, unlike a lot of other Wrexham Park facilities. Why wouldn't we increase the rates more, knowing that mostly non-residents are paying or have a larger differential between the resident and non-resident rate, subsidize our current, our residents to a greater degree, and charge the non-residents? I just, to me, that, there's, if we're going to raise prices, I think we should do it in a more significant way and have a greater differential. I also like the idea of reducing rates for the juniors, so I agree with that. I think there's enough barriers to get into the game of golf, especially as a young one without price being another one of them, but I don't, I don't think this pricing goes far enough.
It's still a Parks and Recs facility, and it's something here that's intended to provide an opportunity for people to have recreation and affordable recreation, so we're, you know, raising it, what, 10% here and nominally, and that's a pretty good...
Mike, we got, we got, I agree, but we got soccer players, AYSO kids, paying 165, 170 to play on, on campus, and we have less than 5% of our residents, even if that's, if it's 10%, using this on a regular basis. So that's the disconnect for me, is the facility is not getting the same utilization that our other parks are getting. I, I mean, I, I think, I would like to see the group go back to the drawing board. I don't know if this, this is something that we need to get done today. I realize there's a two-hearing session here, but come back to the table with further increases, a little bit more analysis. Because again, this, this thing, I mean, the, the facility as a whole is running at a large deficit, and we do have this legacy issue of a, of a loan.
We'll talk about that later.
So I'm, I'm okay with going back to drawing board.
So asking staff to go back?
Well, before we do that, there's a, it takes a while. By the time you get this through and you, you have all the approvals and everything else, why don't we recommend, I recommend that we approve this going forward and then talk about a future change, because in the meantime, we're not going to do anything to the revenue stream, and this was intended to try and do something about it, so.
Normally, it's, my first reaction was yes, from a perception standpoint, your golfers, your friends, you, every other golfer's going to get up there, we're going to do one price increase, potentially three months later, they're going to get another one. I mean, I, we're losing out on $3,000 to $4,000, $5,000 in potential revenue to wait. I'd say, let's just wait and see what happens.
Maybe it can come back quickly in two to four weeks, and then we're not...
Well, the subcommittee won't meet until...
Pardon?
The subcommittee's not scheduled to meet again until April, so, you know, you just...
We can always call another subcommittee meeting, can't we?
Would you show up to that one?
Yeah. I would show up.
Just the last one.
Just one out of the whole, all the time that I've been on there.
I'm kidding. Get over it.
Everybody misses a meeting sometime.
Yeah.
People have lives.
So...
Okay, so we're going to ask staff to come back, to call a special subcommittee meeting to go over these and to come back?
Yes. Counsel, if this is continued to a specific date, potentially second meeting in March, second council meeting in March, then the cost of having to publicly notice this could be avoided, so.
Okay, that's what we're doing. We're continuing to the second meeting in March. But is that the 17th? What's the date on that? 20th? Probably 20th, right?
So this public hearing will be brought back on March 20th.
Okay.
Now, real quick, though, we publish these rates in the paper, so would we have to republish the rates?
I will double check and see if we do. If we do, then we won't save money, but if we don't, then we will. But we noticed that they were, we noticed that the rates were being increased. I'll have to double check to see whether we had to, we were prevented from going beyond those that we published, but potentially, we could save some money here.
So, you know, I'd just go on record here saying, I'm opposed to putting this back for the reasons that people are asking to put it back. You're looking to generate more revenue off of an asset here. People have gone and looked at it, they've done a competitive analysis, and they say that this is what the market should be bringing to us, and that's what we've done. So if we're not going to listen to the subcommittees, you ought to arbitrarily pick the number you want to pick and put it on the sheet and say, here's what we're going to charge, or you ought to listen to them and follow their recommendations and go forward with it. You know, it, it seems meaningless to me to have a committee out there that works on something, puts something together, and says, here's what we think is the best answer, and it comes back and the answer is, no, we want to get more money out of it. And I think that's the wrong, that's the wrong attitude to take going forward for a Parks and Recs facility that's trying to be competitive in, in this industry. And that's, I think that's just a horrible relationship with our committees.
Point noted, but this, this council's also done the same with others when it's convenient. So I hear what you're saying, Mike, but the other thing is, again, 5% to 10% of our residents use this facility on a regular basis. We're not asking our residents to bear the burden, it's other folks to bear the burden. This thing's already operating in the red. We already pay for solid waste removal for our residents, unlike any other city in LA County, with the exception of maybe one, at the tune of about $700,000 a year. We can't subsidize everything, and again, these are not mostly our residents benefiting from this facility.
So what about a compromise? What if we do what Mike says about the resident fees and below and lower the juniors, and we ask the subcommittee to come back with a recommendation for non-residents, to your point?
I can live with that.
Anybody else live with that?
I can live with it.
I'm not sure what you just said.
So basically, I said what you, I said what you said about we approve everything except the non-resident rates. Well, the juniors, we lower that, and then we ask the subcommittee to look at the non-resident
rates, to the point that the majority of people using the facilities are not residents. You get mostly what you want.
So my comment earlier was, I'm opposed to making arbitrary changes to work that people have done, and that's what we're doing as a council. So no, I don't support that. I think we ought to either accept it or reject it. Either way...
And also, to your point of subcommittees, their advisory.
Understood. They've done, you know, we'll get into some more discussion later.
Well, it sounds like we have three people who might be interested in that. We would have to determine what a decreased junior rate would be.
Mayor, I suggest we just, I would prefer we just kick it back to them to say, with the intent of getting a break for the juniors and recouping more for the non-residents, can you please take another pass at this and maybe do a little bit further analysis on even like a, I mean, if you don't golf, it's hard to come up with a comparison on some of these, and just even break it down, cost per hole, something simple, condition of the course, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can just, it shouldn't take long to go back to the committee and then review it and bring it back.
In a month.
In a month.
The 20th, so we'll continue...
It'll be two months.
Pardon?
It'll be a couple of months, but I don't think we get that done probably.
We're success-oriented.
Well, the analysis is already done, so we're just bringing back that analysis and reviewing it. It's not like we're starting from scratch.
Staff will report back on the 20th with, with whatever progress we've made. We'll ask the committee to look at the higher prices for the non-residents, what a junior price may be, and they also need to weigh in on the price sensitivity. It's not a straight, it's not straight math, right? If you raise prices, fewer people make golf, which may not result in net increase in revenues.
I don't think that's likely. I hear what you're saying about the elasticity of price, and I think in this case, we're so below market, that's not going to happen, but I hear what you're saying.
It's not like there's another golf course down the street that's cheaper.
So this council will to, excuse me, continue this to March 20th?
Easy for you to say.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Okay. Unfinished business. Consideration of possible action to receive the quarterly update of the capital improvement program fiscal impact zero. City manager.
Yes. In this year's budget, the council set aside a significant number of dollars, I think it was Ken will give us the detail, but a significant number of dollars towards capital improvements. We had committed to an aggressive program. Council had previously authorized some increased staffing in our engineering division, which allows us to manage a greater number of projects today than we have been able to manage in previous years, and we've asked our public works director to provide us with quarterly updates, not just so that council knows what's going on, but so that the residents know what's going on. You see work going on all over town. A lot of that's being done by the city or its contractors, other work has been done by utility companies, so we're here tonight to report on the city's piece of those improvements.
Thank you, Greg. Honorable mayor, council members, with National Engineers Week here, it's appropriate that we give a great example of what our engineers do on staff, specifically for us, the civil engineers, which I'm biased, I think that's the best, but that's besides the point. Our capital improvement program update for the first quarter of this fiscal year to remind all, in our strategic plan, our goal, primary goal, number four, develop quality infrastructure and technology and ensure that the city's infrastructure is well-maintained and supports an appealing, safe, and effective city. We have about $14 million of projects, including our backlog from last year, scheduled for completion this year, about $4 million of general fund, over $10 million with our water and sewer enterprise funds, and over $2 million of other fund sources. Approximately, the projects I'll discuss tonight, right now, we have about over $4 million worth of work completed for last quarter. So we'll start with our fiber optic network expansion, a project of about $600,000. It provides the city network with better speeds, increased reliability, offsite, offsite data storage, and backup. We laid about 9,000 feet of fiber optic cable and six massive underground vaults with this project, linking the city's municipal network to the recently-built fire station number two on the east side of town as well as our data center. Folks are probably familiar with the Center Street Water main replacement project to the tune of almost $700,000. It was done in two phases. From Pine to Grand, we completed that prior to the school year opening, that was critical, and phase two, from Grand to El Segundo Boulevard, the total main replacement was over 2,000 feet and included the replacement of 10 valves, five fire hydrants, and 38 residential and commercial service laterals. Hopefully, we're all familiar and have used the Main Street lighted crosswalks, and those are the four crosswalks in the 100 to 400 blocks on Main Street. 12 lights per walk and a good shot on the right there in action, two ADA push buttons as well as the associated concrete work. One of the projects that's ongoing right now is our annual concrete replacement project. Staff has done a good job to inventory all our sidewalks in need of repair, and on an annual basis, currently, we're at 6,400 square feet to do this year, and here's a few examples of what's going on, including driveways and curb and gutter as needed. And we not only do work along the roadways in the public right of way, but we also serve our, our parks too. An example of one of our parks. So one project we're proud of for our internal customers is our kitchen upgrade at fire station number one, and the improvements were sorely needed for this facility, which was remodeled and included ADA compliance. Turned out very nicely, and, yes, thank you, before and after. We appreciate all the fire department team's patience while we were invading their home and doing this work, but really turned out nice. This is a look southerly outside a now functional balcony. but really turned out nice. This is a look southerly outside a now functional balcony. So on to our police department roof was a major project for us, over $500,000 worth of work. This roof was last replaced in 1980s, so it was overdue for replacement. In 1999, the dispatch center was also added on the east side of the building. There were definite leak issues along that seam and along the parapet wall. So we're very excited to complete this project as well. Another shot. One of the critical and major efforts that engineering division is undertaking as part of our 2015 pavement management master plan is about $1 million of work a year to repave our roadways. We are seeking to, by 2021, bring our pavement condition index up into a rating of 73. And above 70 is good pavement. And statewide, our PCI is at about 65. And El Segundo, at the time of the preparation of the report, excuse me, in 2015, was right around that number. With the proper amount of investment at the end of this, let's keep it at 73, and that's the right way to do it. With this effort, $600,000 was from our gas tax, $200,000 was from Prop C, and the remainder was our general fund. And we hit major streets, a lot of streets, on the east side of town, Alaska, Hawaii, Hughes, Utah, Coral Circle, Allied Way, Selby Street, and Walnut. Our largest project of the year right now, major sewer project, our pump station 1 and 7 consolidation, really, at over $3 million. Consolidating stations 1 at Acacia and 7 over at Palm of Virginia will add storage capacity and really replace everything, pumps, a generator, telemetry. Our force main, which will get out of the private property easement and into the streets, Imperial and Loma Vista and Acacia, which that part of the work has already been completed. That's the pretty massive wet well on the right that this will definitely ensure greater efficiency and safety for our residents. And the coming quarters, look for us to come to you for completion of the fire station number one retrofit or seismic retrofit, our catch basin connector pipe screens, which is part of the stormwater pollution permit and program. That's our third year, second year finishing. We're going on the third year. Our ADA ramp replacements, pump station 17 engine pump replacement as well. And one that's not on here, to give you a heads up, where we're at the El Segundo Boulevard rehabilitation east of Sepulveda. We're looking at summer 2019 to get that done. We're in the planning stage now, figuring out what we're going to do in totality with that. And we're using state transportation funds, which we'll exchange with Metro, because that'll make them much more easier to use. And Proposition C, measures R and M, and the Senate Bill 1 funds the new kind of gas tax funds as well. So that's it, and I'm here for any questions, Greg. About the upcoming...
Describe a question first.
Oh, I'm sorry. So an upcoming project that's not an El Segundo project, but is a city of LA project as part of the Lawa agreement. Imperial Highway from Sepulveda through our westerly city limit, as well as the westbound lanes from Sepulveda to our eastbound, easterly city limit will be repaved by City of LA. And that's supposed to happen around May, so I'll be coming to council with updates as I get them from City of Los Angeles as well.
So we'll no longer ruin our alignments and like shake fillings out of our teeth?
Exactly. It's a big project and a good thing for our city, for sure.
Yeah, it's a long time coming. We've had lots and lots of meetings over that, haven't we? So, thank you. Hey, thank, the great report. Thank you. Thank you to your team, and civil engineers are pretty cool.
One quick question, Ken. So is everything that we had approved in the budget going to be completed this year?
It's always a goal. We set very aggressive goals in our capital program. And for the past two years, you know, it's the second year of our expanded staff and a very much expanded capital program. So we've gone from an average of $3 to $4 million a year over the past five years prior to the past couple to now pretty much scheduling $10 to $12 million. So there's always things that come unforeseen conditions that we have to go through in the field that delay projects. Contractors certainly can be an issue, as has happened with some of our projects. So we do set aggressive goals. We do make sure we are fully utilizing the staff that we have to set the budget. So it's early to tell right now, but from a earned value kind of standpoint, you know, four and a half million to 17 million, it's working out so far in the first quarter. So we'll try and track that and make sure we stay on top of it.
Good, okay.
Again, I think it's so good to see positive construction going out there on our assets, you know, trying to keep up the infrastructure and looking forward to the east side of Sepulveda when we get down El Segundo Boulevard. That's kind of a, you know, if we can expedite that one, that might be worth it.
The fiber optic that you mentioned, is that done or is it still in works, or is that one complete?
It is complete, and we're just finalizing, basically, the billing with the contractor. We'll bring that to council for completion soon.
Great, thank you. That was a huge win from a data redundancy and recovery. It's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, it's 8:32. We're going to take a break and be back at 8:40. Be late. It's 8:41, and it's the moment you've been waiting for. Item three. Consideration and possible action, oh, sorry, city clerk. Consideration and possible action to provide direction to staff and the Lakes RFP task force related to finalizing the request for proposals for the Lakes at El Segundo site, 400 South Sepulveda Boulevard, fiscal impact none. City manager.
Mayor, members of council, council had previously directed staff to work with the Lakes task force, Lakes RFP task force, and return on this date with an update. So staff is here to provide an update to you with the status of the RFP and also to ask some questions and get direction on some fairly significant policy issues that would be helpful in formulating the final RFP. So Meredith Pettit, our director of Recreation and Parks, is going to start this presentation. She's then going to introduce Carol Beck, who we've brought on board as a consultant to help put the RFP together.
Thank you very much. Good evening again. So as Greg mentioned, we're here tonight to provide an update on the activities of the Lakes RFP task force. The last update we provided was about a month ago to the city council on January 16. Since that update, we've definitely made a fair amount of progress and have a group of committed individuals. Some of the things that have occurred in the last month was that Community Needs Assessment Survey has been put out to the community. It's been out about a month now. Responses are still trickling in, but we've captured, I think, most of what we will receive. And as of today, we had 578 responses. So really excited to see that engagement from the community. Also, we've had a third-party assessment completed on the condition of the golf course and the driving range. We solicited the help of Golf Maintenance Solutions based out of Phoenix. And a gentleman came, visited the range, visited the course, talked to the golf management team and the golf course superintendent, and put together a very thorough report. So we have a good idea of what the condition of the course is, what the condition of the range are, and some recommended improvements, as well as priority rankings for those improvements and cost estimates. We've also completed an in-house facility condition assessment of the clubhouse building. This was done in collaboration with the Public Works Department and Building Safety Department. And just basically taking a look at the clubhouse structure, the building itself, and the surrounding areas, the patio areas, the landscaped areas, and identifying some areas that need improvement. And this could be due to deferred maintenance, cosmetic issues. And we've identified a pretty lengthy list of possible improvements. And we'll talk a little bit about what we don't have in regards to that in the next slide. We also have brought on board a consultant, as Greg mentioned. We've hired CDB Golf Properties, or Carol Beck, and she's here tonight. Will be coming up and helping us get some of the answers that are requested tonight. And as some of the public speakers had mentioned, the task force at their last meeting... some of the public speakers had mentioned, the task force at their last meeting, Carol and I had presented a table of contents for the RFP document itself, to get the feedback of the task force on the content of the RFP document, based on the previous meetings that we have had and the feedback that we've received, really throughout the course of this project as a whole for the last few years as well. So we really wanted to dial in, you know, the structure and the flow of the document itself. And then, since then, Carol and I have been filling in those sections of the RFP document. So what you have in front of you tonight, actually, the task force basically has reviewed it the same amount of time as you have. So this slide is indicating the timeline, and as you know, from the onset, we had a pretty ambitious timeline set by the city council direction. Your goal was to have a proposal selection in April of two thousand and eighteen. And we're approaching that, and as you know, we've come back with some updates since then, and letting you know how the task force progress is going. To continue to meet that goal, there are definitely some outstanding items that we wanted to talk about tonight. Is it doable? Yes, I think, but there are potentially some holes, or some areas that may be more vague than in an ideal situation. But if we're keeping with the timeline, this is what we propose and what we're tracking. Our next task force meeting is scheduled for February twenty-sixth. They're meeting every other Monday at this point. And we would want to release the RFP no later than March first. So that gives us only a couple days after the next task force meeting to make sure that the RFP has everything that we feel comfortable that it needs to solicit quality proposals, and also receive the city attorney's review as well. The task force, we've consulted with them. I think everybody's in agreement that we would want a mandatory pre-bid meeting and site walk. So potential proposers would come, visit the site, and we'd be basically giving them an opportunity to touch, feel, see the condition of the course, the clubhouse building. But again, this is only what you can see. We're not getting into the structural assessment, or mechanical, or plumbing issues that we think might be occurring at the clubhouse building. And then, moving forward, April third would be the date that proposals would be due. And so in the staff report, it indicates that basically from March first to April third, potential operators would have about thirty-four days, or about a month, to complete their proposals and submit those. And about a week later, we would schedule interviews with the top proposers. We would hopefully have enough proposals to narrow down the list to, you know, a short list of two, three, maybe four, depending on how compelling and appealing they are to the selection team, and have interviews with them, and then push to make a final recommendation to city council on April seventeenth. Now, what that means is that the council would set the direction and approve, or authorize staff to then commence negotiations. So the details of the deal, the fine-tuning of what the terms of the arrangement, would still need to be negotiated and brought back to city council at a future date. So with that being said, and that sort of setting the stage of some of the outstanding items that we wanted to talk about, I'm going to ask Carol to come to the podium. So Carol Beck is with us tonight. She's our consultant. Once again, she has a wealth of knowledge and experience in preparing golf-related RFPs, as well as previous history in real estate, and commercial real estate, specifically in the golf industry, as well as being on the side of responding to RFPs. So I think that her well-rounded experience really brings a lot to this project. And we're going to go through some of these pending items that we really would like the council to have a discussion and provide some further direction on this. These are items that the task force and staff and Carol have identified as needing some direction in order to keep moving forward. So the first one being the deal structure. If you've read the draft RFP, you probably noticed that it's soliciting a lease agreement. This is a conversation that we had at the task force, and there are pros and cons to a lease agreement versus a standard management contract. So we'll come back to that in a minute. I just want to run through these real quickly, and then we'll dive in a little bit deeper. The next one is expected minimum financial return. So a lot of financial questions about, what is the expectation of this new operator as far as financial return to the city? And, you know, do you necessarily have to identify where that quote-unquote profit will be going? Maybe not necessarily, but we need to have an idea of what that minimum return to the city, or minimum annual rent, would be acceptable, in hopes that through the bidding process, obviously, it would get bid up and further above what the minimum stated would be. So that would be, you know, so we want to cover the loan repayment to the general fund and equipment replacement fund. Currently, the balance is about five-point-six million dollars. And historically, the expectation has been for the fund to pay that back at about two-hundred-thousand dollars a year. But unfortunately, the fund has been unable to do that most of the years. And additionally, we have city overhead and other charges that are allocated to the golf course fund that are currently about two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars a year. And then the third bullet point is the capital investment and improvements. We want to have a conversation about really how much detail do we, how much flexibility would we give the proposers to set up their own capital improvement plan? Do we offer suggestions, or are we more specific in requiring specific improvements? So we'll talk a little bit about that. The task force has discussed requiring the operator to designate a percent of the gross revenue to a capex fund. And so that would be an expectation, or a recommendation of the task force, as an expectation that the new operator would set aside, you know, typically, it's two to three percent, that would go into a capital reserve fund to fund future improvements. Again, the operator, we want them to submit their own CIP plan for, over the long term, three years, five years, ten years, twenty years, whatever the length of the term that we're looking at getting. And, but that's going to be based on the facility condition and assessment. I mean, we can expect a lot of questions to come, because they need to put their finances together and their capital improvement plans together. That's going to be based on what information we can provide them as far as our needs and wants and desires. And so again, the clubhouse, you know, we've done a cursory review of the clubhouse, but what we can't see is what we don't know. And so the recommendation of staff and the task force is to hire a third-party professional firm to come in and really dig into some of those, and make a professional recommendation on what would be needed over the course of the next, say, twenty years. And we have some, I guess, options, you know, if, again, if the timeline stands, and that's a drop-dead have to meet that, then we have some, we have discussed, you know, how can we make this happen? And one of those things would be to put the RFP out, and concurrently have a third-party come in and make that assessment, and then basically post an addendum. I mean, that we can talk a little bit about what that might look like as well. And then lastly, designating what the city's investment would be in making some capital improvements over there as a good-faith effort, as a partnership. But there's definitely some deferred maintenance over there, and some things that, you know, as an operator would want to come in, and from a fairness perspective, maybe not have, not want to put the money in to something that is either a safety issue, or air conditioning, for instance, you know, a functional issue. So as indicated in your staff report, we do have the two-hundred-thousand dollars that was at the beginning of this budget year allocated to the golf course for the lighting improvements, and wanted to open that conversation to see what the willingness is, and whether we specify that in the RFP or not, to be determined. But want to at least have that conversation. So I think I'm going to turn it back over to, or turn it over to Carol, and maybe she can fine-tune some of the recommendations from her perspective on where we should go with some of these items.
Council, just pardon my voice. I don't feel as bad as I sound, and I'm not contagious, so bear with me.
I had a nickel every time I heard that.
I did check before. As I've talked to Meredith several times, and with the task force and other conversations, all these things really wrap together. An operator's proposing, and that is, I think, one perspective, one of the stronger perspectives I brought is potential, three possible consultants. I've been on the proposer's side of this in many different capacities. So it's all hard to say kind of where to start, which one, because they really all do wrap together. Your proposers, and the goal is to attract as many proposers as absolutely possible. I understand that. Again, timing goes back to this, which is another over, you know, issue, obviously, tonight, based on the comments earlier and the emails. Having said that, deal structure, return, but what overhead is going to be placed on the, you know, assuming it's a lease, back up to the first point, you know, is there consensus there? I mean, maybe we need to chip away, almost eliminate certain things that maybe do need discussion, to try to sort through them, because they all are really wrapped into one package. And from a proposer's perspective, deal structure being the first, lease agreement is where the risk goes. License agreement, the risk goes to the operator. Agreement, the risk is with the city. It's just basic deal structure. So that's first and foremost. Let's bypass that for a minute. We have assumed a lease, this draft RFP, as based on the city's financial situation right now. It really, I feel conceived to do a management agreement, because there is deferred maintenance. We all know that. But using a management agreement, here's the funds going to come to get the property to be competitive, not just safety, ADA things in general, to be competitive. Combination of two reports, one that the Golf Maintenance Solutions complete, other that staff has completed to some degree, which I think we all agree needs to go a level deeper, third-party report, which can be done longer timeframe, or within a shorter timeframe. So that's another point of discussion. So I guess maybe you all want to start asking questions, or if there's something, Meredith, you think that you want further, that you all want me to elaborate on high level, that just talk through that.
I have some questions.
Sure.
So first off, the timeline. Who approved that timeline? Who developed it and who approved it? So keep that thought. So the things I find missing in this RFP is, one, the professional assessment of the facility. Two, a base rate analysis. We need to determine what we want our base rate to be. We need to do a proper analysis, determine what that is. So upfront, that we have in our pocket, what that rate, rent, sorry, base rent should be, so we know what that rent is going into this. A base enterprise fund amount analysis, because what we want, this, wherever we partner with going forward, we want to make sure that this can sustain itself for years and years and years, and that we're not going to be in the same situation going forward. Options for loan repayment, options for capital improvement, a review of the survey, which hasn't even closed yet, criteria for prioritizing and to rank the returned RFPs. We can't set out of RFP if we want to turn around quickly. We don't even know how we're going to rank the RFPs. A timeline, basically, the task force should be developing the timeline, giving all these things that need to be completed, and then a final vote from the task force of the RFP. So I'm just, this goes back to my one question, who approved and who developed the RFP? Because I don't believe that was the council that approved that timeline. So I feel like we're forcing ourselves into this perceived notion of a timeline, and we're making, we're cutting corners, when we all, you agreed, you agreed, the task force agrees, that we need to do some more assessment.
Council member Perzettuck, staff was given direction to develop a timeline, brought to council, and council absolutely approved the timeline. Wasn't unanimous, but a three-two vote to approve the timeline.
Also, when you bring up a base rent, I think that's limiting. I think we...
No, I mean, we need to do analysis to determine what the baseline rent we need to have on that property for any type of partnership. So what is our minimum amount of rent that we need to get from that facility as we go forward? Yeah, exactly.
Well, but if you come up with a minimum, that's probably pretty close to what you're going to get.
No, but I know, but we have to include in costs of, our overhead costs, and it's interesting, in the RFP, there's a couple errors in the RFP, there's a typo, and then, and then there's other, there's some other errors, where we talk about two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, yet it talks about two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. So I just don't feel that this RFP has been vetted effectively. And I'm just, I'm really quite concerned that we're trying to rush this to a timeline. And, you know...
Also, there's a step missing from the timeline, and that's council approval. After the task force approves it, then council, who has responsibility for it, needs to look at it and approve it.
But I mean, are you, so Meredith and Carol, you're, this timeline, that we're trying to cram this into, do we honestly believe that we can get all this stuff accomplished in that timeline? For the best, for us, for the best use of, I mean, for our, for the best, to determine the best opportunity for residents?
So before you answer, I have some questions and some things to say. First of all, for everybody who's worried about the RFP, thank you. I wish you had voiced your concerns six years ago, or even a year ago. I've been saying consistently for six years. I come from a government contracting background for thirty-five years, and to justify a sole source, I mean, it takes practically years to justify. And that was always one of my big concerns, is we were sole sourcing this precious resource we have without going out for RFP. So finally, we're going out for RFP. Now, I spent three hours last night re-watching the meetings from October and November, where we talked about this. We started in November, and actually, at that time, we said we would like the RFP to come back to us at the end of February. So it's been...
Pardon? At the end of January, originally.
Yeah, and then because of the holidays, the end of February. So it's not like it's a covert operation, and we decided at the last minute that we want to squeeze it in in thirty-four days. We've been asking for, what is that, four or five months? I mean, previously, and years, years before that. I wish, I wish you would all come a year ago and voiced concerns about RFPs. That's great, but I think some people just became aware of it in the last week or so. But this has been an ongoing issue. So thank you. Welcome to the party. You know, again, government contractor, I understand more than most, probably, what you're supposed to do to go through this. So I'm thrilled, I'm really happy that, Carol, we have a golf professional leading this proposal effort, because that's also something that we asked for back in October, November. And it wasn't the will of the council then, but we have that probably based on the task force. So thank you very much. So that's where the timeframe has come from, for anybody who's just kind of getting up to speed now. And it was Lee, I thought, who had a very excellent comment. He said, "We're doing what basically should have been done for the last five years." You're right, sir. Thank you. We're doing it now. So we want to do it right. So that's where the timeframe came from.
Meredith, what, so five-hundred-and-twenty-eight responses, or whatever the number is, what are residents asking for right now?
It's really all over the board. I think what we discussed at the task force was, you know, how do we use the results? And, you know, it wasn't put out in such a way where it was... And, you know, it wasn't put out in such a way where it was, if the lakes wasn't there, what would you rather have? It was more of a overall, what facility needs are not being met? And so what floats to the top is sports fields, additional sports fields and green space for organized sports. You know, and then we talk about, well, is that really a viable option for this, for this property, given all of the financial expectations and the capital that would be required for something like that? We don't know. But I think that's really, for me, the only thing that really stands out as a common thing among, not even the majority necessarily, but among several responses. And so I think where the task force really left it was, this is good information, and should we get a proposal for a BMX track, a paintball, or sports fields, or golf, then that, that information would help us make the decision at that time.
Wouldn't that also help determine if we wanted to do a loan payback? I know that you're the first one who brought up fields, needing additional athletic fields and baseball diamonds. And if that were the case, and there was someone who came in and wanted to do that, maybe we wouldn't be so hard pressed on loan payback if they couldn't afford that?
To me, this gets back to, I think we're trying to figure out, you know, cart before the horse here a little bit. I think we need to finish the analysis, and I think that's where you're getting at too, Mayor, to fully understand what the capital requirements are, not in parallel, but in series. I mean, I heard, let's do this concurrently? I don't think we should do that at all. I think we got to give the opportunity for the bidders to inspect either the premises and/or the process. Why would I bid on this without knowing what is required in the clubhouse, which is kind of the epicenter of this whole facility? And as we stated, I think we have these success criteria that we defined, one of which was zero capital investment. So that bottom line, to me, is zero. We don't have any money to put aside for the golf course or any other facility right now, frankly, especially with what we have on the horizon. Finally, we talked about aligned incentives, I believe, which was, the way it's structured currently, there is no incentive for that golf course operator to generate any additional revenues. That's a problem. So to me, we have to take a step back, slow down, look at what the facility needs are, determine the capital requirements, give the bidders the opportunity to look at the process and/or the premises, and ensure that our success criteria are being met. And then if that's a park, a field that wants to come in and take part of the facility, keep the range, I don't know what it can become, but I do believe we also have to fully understand what our residents want. And again, the golf course is used by a small percentage of our residents. So you talk about, well, how much money is required to put up yield space? Probably a lot less than what's going to be required for this golf course on an ongoing basis, from a capital requirement standpoint, very least from an operating expense standpoint. We're already subsidizing this golf course and the range. And how much does Campus El Segundo cost to operate annually?
About $200,000.
So it's on par, right? And it's lacrosse, flag football, soccer, you name it. So I'm just throwing it out there, and it's probably not the most popular argument, but we're really going to evaluate this facility, this treasure, the asset that we have, we ought to take advantage of that, make sure we're doing it in the best interest of the city and the stakeholders. So...
I want to address one other thing also. When people were saying that, "I just want to get this done before the next election", it's true. I'm invested in this. I've invested six years of my life. I'm the only person up here who's been to all the meetings for six years and all the negotiations. Mike's next, he's four. Drew and Carol have been involved two years. I know you're in EDAC, but you weren't negotiating, you know, you were advising, and I appreciate and respect that, but, but yeah, I don't think there's a person here who would want to be involved in something for six years and not be able to see the fruition. I mean, I'd really be interested if there was a person who would be involved in a project for six years and not want to see what the final outcome was. So, so yes, and I, very upfront, talked about, again, watched three hours of meetings last night, I said it there a couple times, you've all heard me say that. So, so yes, I'm invested in this. Okay, Carol.
You haven't responded, no?
One other question, Carol, just pull this over here.
Can you be on the microphone? Carol, which, Carol?
Yeah. Well, I was asking Carol to respond to Councilmember Carol Perztk's question, but also, can you talk a little bit about the lease agreement? My understanding is, just putting it out there, right now, the property's 25 acres is tax exempt, and if it does go to a lease, there's a new property tax bill that somebody has to pay, whether that's the city or the operator. So that's a new expense that the city will face if we go with one option versus the other.
Explain who's, this is a county property tax, or?
Yes. So it's tax exempt today, as a city-owned property. If it's leased, there's a new bill, if it is leased in the future. There'll be a new expense that somebody has to incur.
Is there terminology other than lease that would give anyone interested in it confidence?
Ownership doesn't work.
Not in attract capital, I don't think.
No, I don't, I don't think a license would probably give somebody the confidence they would want. I think one of the issues that plays in this too, that consultant's talking about, is the idea of the, someone, if it's going to remain a golf course, if it's going to remain its current state, then it needs improvement, and so someone has to put capital into it, and they're going to want some confidence level that they're going to have a commitment for a period of time to recoup their investment.
Why do we need to define the first bullet tonight? I don't, I don't understand, like, why don't we just go out there when our RFP process is fully baked, and we understand our facility needs, and see what we get? Why restrict the requirements?
I think that staff was directed to come back tonight to the council, by a majority of the council, to provide this kind of information. And there's a feeling or sense that this is too fast, and I understand that. Very clear to me that even if the timeline that's met on the staff report, current council is not going to make the ultimate decision on the use of this property, it's just not going to happen, because just the negotiation, the contracting process, it's not going to happen before new councils onboard. So I, I just kind of remove that from my mind, it's just not going to happen. So staff just here trying to move at the direction of the council had set.
No, I just, again, the more parameters we put in place, the more we're going to limit the options that we get. So why are we, who cares? Let them come up with the deal structure. Let them get creative. If they understand the opportunity and they're in the realm, they're going to come back with that deal structure, and we can say that's great or not. We have a tax implication, that's not good. Why don't you guys consider something else? I just, I don't know why we need to, knowing that it's not going to happen that quickly, let's, like, slow down and define what's really important.
Well, I understand, and that's why it's, my understanding where the council was headed with this from prior discussions was that there was no limitation on the potential use, other than it was going to be a public recreational use consistent with the covenant on the property, which could be anything, or anything that's recreation. And so, but part of that is, if it's going to be a golf course, and keeping some of the structures it has today, then for those people that might want to bid on what's there today, I guess there's this, there's this need to quantify what it's going to cost to repair those facilities. Beyond that, I don't know how much, if it's just sort of a wide open process, I don't know how much more information we need to provide to the bidders, other than, here's the property, here's, we want all sorts of ideas, and, and we're looking to make money off it. I don't, could be a very general RFP.
I think to Councilman Dugan's point, you know, money is one aspect, but it's, we had the vision statement that he brought forth from the golf course subcommittee, which is pretty clear about maximum benefit for El Segundo residents, juniors, seniors, adults, all alike, right? And so money is one component only, but, but I agree with you that I think the most important thing, if I was bidding on this, I would want to know what capital I have to put into it. And right now, that's the ambiguous component. We don't know how much capital is required to put into that facility, be it golf or otherwise, because anyone that's going to want to come in probably wants the clubhouse, or they want to know if they're going to want to demolish the clubhouse, what's involved in that. Either way, they're going to want to know what the assets are that they have to work with.
Well, I would assume the, out of the multitude of options that are available for the property, that those that would want to keep it pretty much in its as-is state, that we're just going to repair it and operate it, are the ones that would be interested in that number. The others aren't going to care. Someone's going to tear it down and turn it into baseball fields or soccer fields, they're not going to care.
Maybe, again, we don't know, right? Clubhouse could be savings of a half a million dollars for somebody, the structure's already there. We don't, we don't know.
Possible.
Let's give everyone the same opportunity after we've understood what is required, and see what they come back with.
Now, again, if we're going to put it out there from a legal perspective, I, we should identify, I mean, I don't know how, if we can identify, you've got a structure that has finished walls and whatnot, and how much you can see through those walls and see all of the issues. I don't know, that's not my expertise, but if we know there's problems, then we should identify those, and, you know, there are always just going to be estimates, because when you start opening walls and doing things, costs change. We, you know, a lot of disclaimers about all of that, but...
But currently, we only have a cursory assessment. We only, we don't have an official assessment, just like we did, we did an official assessment of the golf course itself. We should do the same with the facilities.
I understand, and my point was, just from a legal perspective, there'll still be a lot of disclaimers about that number.
Absolutely. At least you'll have at least a professional opinion, rather than a cursory opinion.
That's for both the city's benefit internally, to assess and analyze, and also, obviously, to provide, determine collectively with the, collectively that, to feed the operator, if you will. Something I keep coming back to in our discussions, and back and forth, and crafting and redrafting, and is, you know, bidders, and, you know, whether it's the golf course operators out there, or it's even non-golf course, outdoor recreational use, they're the experts. So we do want to look to them. Maybe back to your point, to one extent, we do want to leave this open. That's that, when we started drafting this, the intent, spirit of it was, leave this as open as possible. You start drafting, and then you start, and then it does, it does bubble up, because then you say, well, we have this debt service. Well, that service covered. Well, you can say, and you circle, again, everything circles back around to kind of one another, then you circle back up to a lease versus management. Well, no one's going to guarantee a $235,000 or $225,000, whatever the number is, debt service under a management agreement. And they can show you a five-year management agreement, and they can say, they're going to pay us XYZ, $96,000 they're getting paid today, something in that neighborhood's market, and, you know, plus an incentive. Back to your point, you want some incentive that they're growing, growing the bottom line, not just the revenue, by the way, but, you know, you, they can show you, okay, net, oops, sorry, net cash flow after, after the management fee, okay, city, you're going to make this, and it could look great, but that risk on the city, it's not on the operator, as opposed to having a built-in guaranteed rent. That's where we circled back around, I'll say, I all circled back around and reiterated it with, you know, with Meredith and with Greg, so we that, you know, that just can't keep coming back to the lease because of the financial situation. We're not trying to say that's what it should be, but just trying to point it out, that's what it just keeps coming back to, looking and feeling like, basically, because of the financial situation. So if there's, and so back to why these are the items, looking for direction on, confirming, do we want that debt service guarantee? Do we want capex? Right, because I'm, I'm the one that probably emphasized it more than anyone, if there is that $200,000 city investment money, if that's sitting there, I mean, there is, there is significant deferred maintenance, no fault of Donovan, no fault of the city, it is what it is, it's just it's occurred. It's age and wear and tear, but as a good faith effort, so an operator's not walking in and say, okay, you're asking me to do a guaranteed rent, if that's the tack we're going, asking me to cover all these city overhead, which, which by the way, I think, and we haven't gone into detail on that, seems like some of that, and I just heard about the property tax situation, but that should be able to come down at a release scenario, as opposed to a management agreement. I think in some of that $235,000, some management fee is a part of that, well, that would go away. There's some other capital, you know, in equipment, on replacement.
Management fee's not part of that.
But I'm just saying, it all does circle back around, as far as, it's hard to separate each of these items to a degree. And so, again, on the city investment, I'm just stating my opinion, it's, it is a good faith effort, if there is, our funds, if it's $100,000, if there's something there, say, we want to partner with you. We want to, we really want, we're not looking you to, you to do everything. We want to partner with you, and it is, it would show a significant amount of good faith, and show these bidders that city's not just looking them to come in and clean up kind of what's happened there, take a lot of money. Say, we, okay, we're not going to pay your rent for the first three years, we're going to put all back into capex. They may bid it that way. That may be something we need to start thinking about now. That could be one way to do it, if there isn't any capex. That's an alternative, and we could leave it open and let them do it that way. They're going to get creative. They're going to just start turning the dials, rent, capex, determine what their return on investment is, just like the city would with their return on investment. It would depend on what the benefit to the city was, if that was something that would be explored. I want to make a disclosure, by the way. I spoke to Carol earlier today, because in addition to watching three hours of meetings last night, I Googled for about an hour and a half for government bids on golf courses, and I was seeing anywhere from two weeks to six, seven, eight weeks for the response time. So I left her a message and said, "I just wanted to know, based on this range, if 34 days is doable." So you called me back, and we discussed that, and that was pretty much our discussion. We did, and I'll just elaborate a little bit on what, we've, obviously, we've talked about this, yes, it's a tight timeframe. My counterpoints are my, I guess, back up to that, and how we could make that happen, and make it, you know, a comprehensive RFP process, not, you know, jeopardizing it, not taking anything away from it. Key, a couple key elements of that is, one, in the exhibits, and you see the exhibits, we are still in the process of pulling those together, but giving these proposers as much information upfront, so you're not having to build in two weeks and three weeks for questions. A lot of the RFPs out there, a lot of samples that you've seen, Meredith's seen, and we've all seen, you know, they give you one page of financials. Well, they're just setting themselves up to have to have, they're going to ask all these questions. So I know exactly what they're all going to ask, I've asked them. So having a very, very comprehensive set of exhibits, which we're prepared to do, those aren't complicated to get out, we need to get the financials fine tuned, but part of that is, too, outlining the city expenses and what the expectation is there, which is why that's on that list, that feeds into part of these exhibits. You know, the list of equipment that would stay, the list that would, is the operators and the current operators, and it would be said, we'd put one line in there, subject, you know, you can negotiate that with the existing operator. I mean, there's all these little ways you can address that, but as much background as you've just given upfront, that's another component that maybe isn't spelled out in the slides or in the document, but that's a lot of thought that went into the drafting of it and the list of those exhibits. And again, once, once again, thanks to the spirit of what's behind the timing of it, what would be important to be able to achieve that timing. Yeah, too, I mean, I went back, and I went and looked at some of the samples that I used, and, yeah, 34 is fast, but there's a city, you know, Carson City, Nevada, just put an RFP out the very end of last year, they had a 33-day turnaround. Sioux Falls, South Dakota, had a three-course RFP, they had a 34-day turnaround, and that was for three courses, a 27-hole, 18-hole, and nine-hole.
But we're talking, that's a turnaround, that's if the RFP is comprehensive at the offset.
Well, some are more comprehensive and some weren't. What is that, was the release?
But doesn't mean, but that's, is that, I mean, the thing is, regardless of what other people are doing, we want to do what's right for our city. And what's right for our city is to do a comprehensive analysis before and do the RFP the right way, so that when we do put it out, we get the most appropriate bids, and that we already have predetermined... So that when we do put it out, we get the most appropriate bids, and that we already have predetermined what the criteria is to rank those bids. And so that we do this in a process where we get the right fit for our city.
Understood.
So I, I mean, we're, I, we keep chewing, whoring this in, I, we keep trying to accommodate a. You know, you, Suzanne, you keep saying that you, you want an RFP and we need to do the RFP and we need to do it right, then let's do it right. Not one person has come up here, Carol, the city, the, or Mark, everyone is saying. That the timeline is not adequate enough to do the best RFP process for our city. Is that correct? So we, why are we then doing this? I, I, I keep, we keep going back to the fact, you want to do what's right for the city, let's do it right. Let's be transparent, let's make sure we have all the, our, our ducks in a row, all the analysis done. So that we can go out to bid or go out with the RFP that's comprehensive, that everybody has vetted and approved. And let's see what comes back, and then we have already established a criteria to rank those RFPs. We haven't even done that, we haven't even looked at that yet, because we don't even know what we want.
Carol, I don't disagree with you, I've been talking to staff for a while about the same thing. I was just explaining where the timeline came from originally.
Okay, perfect, so then let's, can we take a vote to say, let's do an RFP the right way? And not hinder ourselves by a timeline that's, that was established without understanding the whole ramifications of doing a proper RFP. Or we didn't underst- we didn't know what was, need to go into it, we now have a task force that's up and running functionally. Um, with a lot of good heads on the, on the, on the task force, so let's go and we have you, Carol, let's. Do this RFP correctly so we can do what's best for our city.
Yeah, I don't think we can vote on that, because it's nebulous, I think we need some structure.
I'd like Carol to recommend a schedule to us, for crying out loud.
She's our, our SME.
Or the, or the task force.
Well, she's the SME.
She's the expert of the task force.
So Carol, then can you come back with a, with a ta- with a timeline that would actually optimize the selection process?
Well, maybe she has one.
It, it, I mean, it, it'll be subject to, and I'll need to work with Meredith as far as timing of the task force meetings. Working that schedule, working within when we can secure this third-party estimate for the, um, clubhouse. Um, and, you know, one time we have the better, I mean, there's no, there's no hiding that, I mean, time is luxury. But, you know, we were trying to meet what the, what the, what instructions we were given, and so that's why. We weren't trying to cram it into this short time, we were trying to, you know.
Cram it in.
Satisfy, so just, yes, to just so you understand that.
Heard two options about the facilities assessment, though. We've heard have it everything before we go out, or say that there's going to be an addendum when we get that information. And get cracking on getting it assessed.
Well, that, well, having the addendum would be, that, that's if we still want to meet the tight timeframe of the RFP. That would mean get somebody on board literally this week, say, I, I can't imagine it would take more than a week to turn around a facility assessment. And, you know.
So have to go out for competitive bid?
Come in and get it, you know, get it done, I mean, we had, uh, Maintenance Solutions did it in, you know, a matter of a couple of days for the golf course. So get that, that, that's another scenario if we needed to keep the time, that, that's called the April seventeenth target date out there. That was to appease that, kind of have this simultaneous path, that was a way to make that happen. We don't need to make that happen, we're given more time to do the assessment and then put it out. That would be, that would be ideal, if we have that time. That would be the best, that would be.
The best case for our residents.
Sure, yes. That way, the, the bidders have the opportunity, not just in the middle of their underwriting and they're putting their proposal together. Uh, but they have it fully at the beginning. And when we get the assessment back, by the way, that's a big decision, you know, that's made, decision of how, you know, answering some of these other questions. Um, what we want to require them to do, and let's hope that whole roof doesn't need to be replaced. Let's hope it's one HVAC unit, not four, I mean, that's, those are some of the big ticket items on that list that we did, they're just what ifs. So, be back to your point.
And then we haven't really optimized or utilized the data from the survey yet, because the survey hasn't closed, correct? So we haven't even really assessed that data.
But we've also heard it wasn't lake-specific, it's the town in general.
So why did we come out with a, a survey that wasn't lake-specific when we?
The discussion at the task force was basically surrounding, you know, what are the unmet Parks and Rec facility needs?
So, but we haven't really taken that and that, that data and looked at it and done a pure, a few, uh, an analysis on it to determine. You've, you've had a, you've had a first glance at it, but no one's taken that data and actually scrubbed it, correct?
It can probably be distilled down to what would be at a golf course or at that facility. Like, we know that people want a skate park, because we had them come here.
But is the task force seeing that data?
Yes, they have, I mean, it's, it's still open, it's not officially closed, so people can still go on and do, but. It's, you know, we got the majority of the responses in the first week.
And it's not scientific?
No.
It's front-loaded.
But it's, it's what our residents are saying.
To fill it out, how?
It's the only way to get our voices from our residents.
Again, not scientific, front-loaded.
Mike, comments?
I got a lot of comments, um, I've been sitting here listening, so I'll, I'll offer some advice to, there's a couple of candidates out in the, the audience right now that. You get the opportunity for people to answer your questions before you do, and they give you the wrong answers, right? And finding that a couple of them are actually commissioners and members of other boards and committees is a little discerning on my part, I'll share that openly with you. Like the mayor said, we've been pushing for an RFP for five or six years on this thing, we're finally getting one. And I've been quoted a million times saying, if anything's worth doing, it's worth doing right. So I don't know where all the, all the hoopla is about what are we doing trying to ram this thing through and everything else. I would like Carol, as a subject matter expert, to advise us what a better schedule would be and bring it back and say that, what, what's it going to take? If it takes more time, if it's worth doing, it's worth doing right. I have no, no, I have no problem with that. Appreciate a lot of you trying to answer that question for me in a public comment period. A lot of people made comments that people were working on the top golf thing for five years, that's absolutely not true, nobody was working on it for five years straight. People ask questions and answers look weird. And there's one thing I want to share with everybody today is a look at the finances of the lakes. Meredith, on the screen, there's a PowerPoint there, and these are just my notes for discussion, and I want to share them with you to talk about. What I see over there, cancel that, yeah, and then go, all right. So, there's a million ways of showing accounting on a, on a facility, right? It's a. It is an enterprise fund, and as so, it gets accounted for a certain way, and in that accounting. There are loans and other things that don't show up in any formal loan, but there's payments that have been made and other things. And I just want to go through a little bit of what that looks like as you go through it, so the next slide, please. When you look at the current accounting over there, you have revenues coming into the lakes, now that's a lakes, now we. We hire a management company to run that facility, we pay them a fee, they run it, they handle all the things. It's not a city function. They have direct operating expenses, so I kind of put a, the way I think of things, I put a demarcation mine on Sepulveda Boulevard. So the cost of running that facility east of Sepulveda is the true hard cost of that. Looking at it a way, uh, the next step is, there are city administrative costs, because it's an enterprise fund. The city is allowed to allocate costs to it, it's not true cost, it's an allocation of cost. And then there's a loan that was taken out to build the facility, and that needs to be repaid. So those are, those are the three big ticket items out there that, that I look at, so I can get the next slide, please. So when I talk about the operating expenses, this is the east of Sepulveda, there's, the restaurant has the food and beverage, the pro shop has costs, you know. All the monies to go over there, the G and A on this slide here represents the management contract with Lane Donovan to, to. Run the facility, and when you look at all these costs, there's other operating costs in there, there's a right-of-way lease, there's other things that happen. But that's the cost of running that facility east of Sepulveda, okay, that's the operating expense, next slide, please. The city administration has allocations, they're not costs, they're allocations. So, a lot of these are really de minimis. There's two, three or four of them that have huge numbers, I suppose, and I'll show you the numbers later on that one. But this is what the city administration costs are. Now, these costs are allocated costs that exist in the city, whether or not the lakes is there or not. For some, you know, and, and not all of them, but some of them, right? So, the G and A in this one is the city's overhead for. Providing support to the management company that's running the, the golf course. And it strikes me a little strange that we pay a golf course management company a fee. And the city's overhead to, to help them is about one point four times that fee. So that, there's some questions about that, what are we doing here, but, but that's city administrative costs, next slide, please. And then there's the bond payments, right? Originally, there was a bond put out, it was refinanced in two thousand and three or four. Principal and interest payments have to be made, so those are all the, the costs that go into the lakes over there, okay, so the next slide. Looking at it from a cash flow analysis, it has a little different perspective to me. The revenues are the same, they don't change. The direct operating expenses are cash out, that's the cost of running the facility east of Sepulveda, that doesn't change. The loan is a commitment of payment, so that is a higher priority to me than. The accounting for city overhead costs. And then the city administrative costs ought to fall in line after that, that's how we, how I would ideally account for this. And that's how I account for it in my own head, that's how I think about this, that's how I see the facility. So, in a cash flow analysis, let me get the next slide. If I take the cash revenues, I subtract the direct operating expenses, and I subtract the loan servicing. And I add all that up from nineteen ninety-seven to now, that's all the data I have in front of me, and it looks like this. The cost of that facility, there's a net positive hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Okay? So that's the cash flow analysis, now. I hear people talk about there's a five million dollar loan out there, okay? Let's talk about that, let's go to the next slide. The city allocated costs are really the difference in this. There's a depreciation expense in there of four million dollars, now, we're a, a non-taxable entity, so depreciation is meaningless. Shouldn't even be considered, so I've put it below the line. There's a G and A, and these, these are the twenty-year totals of that, right? So there's, there's roughly a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year of city charges. To operate that facility. And there's some other fees in there that, there, there, there's three hundred thousand dollars sitting in an equipment replacement fund. Apparently. My point is that these are things that really exist without the lakes even being there. The, the city overhead would exist if the lakes wasn't there, those charges would go somewhere else, they're not dedicated to the lakes. Let's get to the next slide here. So, there's a bunch of data, and I don't intend anybody to read it, but this has come out of the finance department, and I've just racked it up in a manner that it. Makes sense to me, and this is how I'm, I'm looking at it, last slide here. My conclusions to this would be, you know, the, the city G and A costs, and when Gene Krikorian did the pro forma analysis on this. He said, hey, there's city charges there that if the lakes wasn't there, they would go somewhere else, and that's true. So the, the city G and A, if it doesn't go to the lakes, it goes somewhere else. The accounting practices, depending on how you look at it, if you account for it as an enterprise, it could give you a different picture versus a cash flow analysis of that. So in hindsight, twenty-some years ago, when they made this a enterprise fund. Maybe it didn't work out the way they originally had it planned, well, okay, reality is, it's probably not that far off from being successful. I'd like to make a belief that the lakes has really generated enough positive cash flow to really. Run the facility and service the loan, and the rest of it is that the city G and A charges are the parts that are not being covered by that. And this is the only Parks and Rec asset that has the ability to pay for itself. So, when I hear that there's a five million dollar loan out there from the city to this, I really go tilt on that. I kind of go, okay, I, I, I know where I see that in the paperwork here, but in reality, what have we done? We've taken money out of the annual revenue streams, put it into the general fund to pay for overheads. And then brought it out of the overhead, the general fund to pay for loans, and called that a loan back to the golf course. So I, to me, I, I understand why that is, and I'm not arguing the accounting practices, but I'm saying that as an asset. The place really has a positive impact on the city, it's not a negative drain. It's really not a negative drain to the city, but it's, it's being perceived at that. And people are passing out information there that is different than that. Now, this information is available to anybody that wants to look at it and analyze it any way they want, but. We, no, we have a groundswell of people out there that, you know, I get fifty emails today. That are very similar in structure and written, that talk about we have this five million dollar loan, it's absolutely unconscionable not to pay that back. We've kind of paid it back already. We really have, so, a- a- as I look at this. I wonder that we really have the right information in front of the committees. How the committees made some of the decisions they've made on this loan, you know. That, I'd like to hear how that works out, and I intend to hear that when the committee report comes back to the council here, but. How we address this, we ought to be doing it right, and we ought to understand where we're at today, and anything going forward. Ought to have a good look at making sure that it is sustainable, and I agree with all those concepts. So. There's talk about have we paid that loan back or not, is, should this be maintained itself as an enterprise fund? I think that's an open discussion that we ought to have, open, that's, that's something that we ought to talk about as a city. Maybe that's not the best way to operate this facility. So, I just wanted to share that, those are my thoughts, and. I think going forward, we ought to take the time to do this right, it ought to be done right, absolutely support that, a thousand percent. Thanks.
So Mike, I've brought up the enterprise fund before, and if we could de-enterprise it, what the benefit is of that. I agree, we need to look at that, I do have a question about your wheat tax or your allocation. If we're spending more in a wheat tax than we are for the management company. What percentage of Rec and Park staff time is spent there, do you have people there during the day, Meredith, or? Or, uh, a wheat tax?
You know, just to be clear, I think what, what Councilmember Dugan was saying is that we're spending more in the, we were spending more. We have reduced the, the overhead allocation, but we were spending more on the overhead allocation than in the management fee. That's not the total expense of the management company, we cover all the management company's expenses and pay them a ninety-six thousand dollar a year management fee. So as far as the allocation, um, our finance department has allocated a certain percentage of the various departments' time, time. Like one percent of my time, one percent of Mark's time, some percentage of Meredith's time, to the golf course enterprise fund. Combined, it now equals eighty, eighty-six thousand dollars a year, but we don't have a permanent staff person assigned to the golf.
I didn't think you did, that's, well, that's why I asked, we're spending as much in allocation as we are in management.
We're spending a hundred and thirty previous to this year, this year it's, Joe has reduced it from a hundred and thirty.
Used to be allocated over all of my people that I manage, like sixty of them, but.
I, I think, um, eighty-six thousand dollars, my, one of my companies, that wouldn't even cover potential legal fees for a year. So if we get sued at the El Segundo Lakes, who's liable? The manager or the city, I guarantee we're going to be named.
Um, actually, um. The, we require the management company to have insurance.
Additional insurance, they'll still go after us as a city, keep our pockets, okay? Can I clarify something Mike said too, sorry to cut you off, Mark? Cash flow and profit are not the same. Cash flow and profit are not the same, that's why they're recorded on different financial statements as our P and L's, balance sheets, cash flow statements, three different instruments. Second point, depreciation expense, national. Depreciation expense, national US accounting standards require depreciation to be accounted for. It's an expense, non-cash expense, but it's an expense. We're counting for the asset that is there.
Drew, I'm not arguing with the accounting.
It was the largest, you did, you did, you were arguing with the accounting.
I'm saying that the enterprise decision may not have been in the best interest of the facility. I'm saying that there's enough.
The way you got to that, the way you got to that was going through the accounting. We have a finance director who's got how many years of experience in city finance that has validated that this is being done the correct way. So let's, let's clear that up, because you keep coming back to we're misleading the public in the way that we're accounting for this course.
I, I think we are. I, I, I think that the way that the financials are being reported are misleading. I think that, you know, the data is here, the numbers are out. Joe's, this is something that Joe's given me. The way that you rack it up, you can show a net positive cash influence on, I'll call it hard costs, off the city costs. And, and it's, it's an accounting practice thing. But the, the, the comments that are being made is this place is losing half a million dollars a year, absolutely false. This place owes the city $5 million. Okay? It's an accounting number, but how much money has this facility put into the general fund over the last 20 years? It's a significant chunk of money. Now, the loan has been serviced, it's gone. And the reason that, if you add up all of the costs going for the last 20 years, the reason it's a positive number is because the last four or five years, there's been no loan payments made. The city, there's been, you know, the cities have the ability, the, the facilities have the ability to put about a million and a half bucks into that, into that side of the equation. That's what makes the difference. I'm just, you know, I'm not here to argue accounting. I'm here to look at things at a macro level and a cash flow analysis. And if it...
But to Drew's point, from a depreciation standpoint, our facility is, is in dire need of a fusion, infusion cash. It's, it's dilapidated. And we don't have, the, the golf course has not been raising enough money, earning enough money to sustain that, the current, the current golf courses as it should be. Like it's, we haven't, there's been, hasn't been enough cash flow, extra cash flow, to put back into the golf course to sustain it.
I would argue that because we've been draining it into the city general fund. We've been draining a lot of cash flow into the city general fund.
So Carol, can I ask Carol a question? Carol, did the task force develop any scoring criteria yet to Carol's point earlier, the other Carol about once we get these proposals back, we want a standardized way of evaluating the merits of them based on some of those success criteria?
That will be a point to talk about in the next meeting.
Okay. To me, that should become before we finalize the RFP. What's the end game? What are we looking to achieve with these proposals? I think we've got to start with the end in mind before we even finalize the proposal. And then I have, just have some comments on the document that's before us, if you don't mind. One is, um, items one and two on deal structure. I think we strike those. This would be my recommendation to the task force. I don't think we need them. Again, I think it limits the type of deals and the volume of proposals we'll get back. I... Yeah, it's the, it's the second page of the staff report. So I would just propose that we strike items number one and two. Again, letting them come back to us, to your point earlier, Carol, about create, they'll get creative. Let's see what they come up with. Let's not restrict the possibilities. If the council can live with that, but I don't know why we'd include it.
Well, Carol, I thought you said that we would need to give them the guarantee of a lease, no?
Um, again, that's depends. Are the goals of the...
Why, I don't, they don't care about our internal, I don't think they care. That's our problem. That's not their problem. They want to look at this and how can I maximize this asset? And what arrangement is going to give me a little bit of certainty, what length of term, et cetera? Let them figure it out, right? We just are picking the best deal for the city financially, benefit the most residents, fits within that recreation requirement. But I don't know why we're going to restrict what we're looking for. Meredith, did I miss something over there? Let's...
I just raised the issue of, um, I have to look at a legal issue, but the potential to sell the property to the highest bidder.
Why wouldn't we evaluate all options? We're fiduciaries up here, right?
I was just, you know, you were talking about being creative.
Is that an option, though, that when it was gifted to us, we have?
It's going to have a deed restriction on it, but, I mean, it might be not saying, may not. It's all in how you value what it is that you want out of the deal. There's money, there's the, as you said, there's the money aspect, there's the park and rec aspect, there's all of that, but...
Was that an option when it was gifted to us? It was gifted to us to have recreational?
Right. I don't think there's any restriction on sale of it. Um, just whoever...
Just what, how the land can be used is what's restricted.
I don't know. So...
I, I don't think that was the intent of the gift. I'm seeing a negative in the back. Somebody who would know.
Let's not belabor it. I think the point is, we want to cast a net wide. Would you agree with that?
Yes.
Suzanne, okay. Do we have enough to go on? Where are we, where are we at, Greg?
I, I say cast a net.
So, so cast a wide net. It sounds like, based on Carol's recommendation and the conversation, that we want the capital study conducted and part of the RFP. And you want Carol to come back with a revised timeline.
And the criteria to rank the, the RFPs.
Yeah, I think that's...
Are we going to give that to her?
Yeah, that's the most important component. I mean,
We ought to give that.
We should figure, I think we should weigh in on that. I think Mike already started that dialogue with the vision of the, of the, I forget the document name, but we ought to decide what the end in mind is before we even go out to bid.
So the evaluation criteria and maybe the, the parties, who, who's doing the evaluation? Has council talked about that yet?
No, I'm not saying we make the decision. I'm saying that we decide what's important. You know, the scoring criteria, how important is the benefit to the most number of residents? How important is the financial impact, the length of the term, the certainty of the organization that's going to, to do this, their track record, all those different criteria? That we determine that in advance.
Do you want we, the council, or the task force?
Maybe the task force does it, because I thought we, I thought we asked them to do that, didn't we?
I, I thought so too.
Okay, so then, yeah, I think we should allow them to do that, but we should see that, I think, before we go out to bid.
Yeah, that's what...
I've, I've got a draft and some outline and bullet points that capture things that come from the vision statement, which you're referring to, that came from the, I think, the last council meeting. Points that have come from the task force, when we reviewed the table of contents, um, which spurred that on. So I've already got a draft of, to present to the task force. I mean, you'll wait and come up. Clear-cut evaluation criteria and system.
Great. Thank you. So we can provide an update on, at your March 6 meeting? I don't know how far along we'll be, but we can, we can provide you an update with our progress.
But I think that Dr. Brown will be back.
And I think the direction here is we want it right.
Absolutely.
We want it done well, and we want it done right.
Been pushing for that for years. And I don't know if you want to talk about cer, you know, loan repayment as part of that, but that's, that's an issue that I don't think future, I don't think future decisions ought to have that limiting them as far as what you want to do. The finances are going to be what the finances are going to be. That should have no impact on the finances going forward. If we're going to optimize that facility, that should have no impact on that. We ought to be looking at what's, what we're trying to accomplish. If we're providing a cost-effective recreation facility, it ought to have a certain criteria. If we're looking to sell it as, and, and cash in a gold mine, that ought to be a criteria. Whatever we're going to do, it ought to be a criteria, independent of any burdens of previous commitments. And I think there's been enough money paid back into the, into the system that already kind of documents that. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a decision going forward. It shouldn't hamper the process going forward. I think it only gets in the way. I really do. And for, and for the life of me, the, I, I just walked through a, a, a a site underlowing lease in another city with a guy, giving him some help, and, uh, there's far less knowns in that than we're talking about giving these people here. So I'm not so sure that the detail of this mechanical or any kind of a physical assessment is beyond what you need to see walking through that facility. There's, there's not a hell of a lot more that you're going to look at, so I don't think it's going to change a lot of their, their proposals, but I'm willing to do it right. Whatever you, whatever you, whatever you recommend is doing right, I'm supporting that.
And if you're coming back with a proposed updated timeline, I would like a date in there for council review and approval. It doesn't necessarily have to be a first and third Tuesday. We can always have a special meeting.
I'll just add to, kind of to your point right there. As far as looking at a shorter versus a longer timeline, this isn't an overly complicated property. It's really not. There's a lot, it's just not, which is a great, that's a positive here. So we don't need to, you know, we need to express this out two or three months. I mean, yeah, to give everyone a little more than 34 days would be great, and that's what the timeline will show. But it, good news is, again, from an assessment standpoint, it's just literally, it is what they can't see by walking around. They're going to walk around, they're going to walk around the golf course.
I don't know if I entirely agree with that. I mean, you cited 34, 35 days for those other government contracts. Those were all golf course operators that were bidding, correct?
Right. And those were only ones that were, I mean, there's other...
So just, just playing devil's advocate, you get someone that says, I want to totally transform the face of that facility. I want to do environmental remediation to know that the ground is clean, because I want to do something different here. Whatever it is, but those kind of opportunities that aren't more of the same, more of the status quo, those will not get back in 34 days.
But there's also people already out there doing that, because they know this is on the horizon. They're already checking it out.
And I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say, okay, um, just throwing out, this is not my idea. I don't, I'm not even advocating for a wave pool there, so I want to get that. But I'm just saying, there's a lot of surf pool technology out there. For example, I guarantee those people are not in the know about this site. And I'm not even saying that would be feasible or, or anything else conducive, but there are a lot of different opportunities that require more time than would be, I'm going in here and I'm doing more of the same. I know I need to bring in, on average, this much more capital. I'm going to increase the golfer base by this through my marketing program. I already, I do that. That's in my wheelhouse. But if I'm completely changing it, it takes time. You know, I used to work for Brunza Corporation. We built bowling alleys. Those decisions took years to make, years, and we did that every day. So it's, it's, it's not as simple as we're making it out to be.
So have you copyrighted catchawavetoday.com yet?
No, I have not. And you know what? God forbid a, a surf pole ever goes in there. It'll be like, no, but I'm just saying, that's just one...
You won't have to go surf the other oceans of the world?
So my last comment, I just want to make sure that we're optimizing the, um, the task force in the development of the timeline as well as making sure that it's, the RFP is as comprehensive as possible.
So I have a question. How many task force members are here tonight? I see one, two, three, four, five. Oh, no, four. And how many people have attended the meetings who are not task force members?
Two.
Three. Thanks. Thank you for your interest in attending meetings.
I could just, kind of in response to what Councilmember Persick just said and, and balancing out, I'll be reviewing this at its end, but kind of from the perspective I'm sitting in at the moment is, given that it could be almost any use, there probably won't be a lot of legal leaves in the RFP, because it'll, um, any contract that comes about as a result of this could be very different. It's rec field versus a golf course versus a wave pool, whatever. Those are very different contracts, and, and depending what people want to put into it, as far as the creativity of how they're going to capitalize it, all of that, you know, that, that's something that will take months to negotiate out, once you pick someone that you think you want to do business with. I think the most we'd probably say from a legal perspective is, if it's going to be leased, there's going to be insurance that's commensurate with the risks of what you're posing to do. Um, and the city's going to be affecting indemnification with regard to all of your activities, but really, I think you're looking more at, um, the practical side of what's going to be there and what's it worth to the city. I don't know, it's so much of a legal issue.
Okay, anything else?
As long as we're polling the audience, how many of you were surprised to see that the operating cost and the loan payments may or may not be covered by revenues? Huh?
None. No one was surprised.
But now we got, but we've got a story out there that there's, it's losing half a million dollars a year. It's not true. So...
Okay. Have enough direction? Thank you. Thank you, Meredith. Thank you, Carol. Okay. Consent agenda. Any polls? No polls? Do I have a motion to approve item four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine?
So moved. Second?
En favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, four zero. Thank you. Let's see. New, no new business reports. City manager, hey, where's everybody going? The meeting's not over.
Very briefly, um, we had a very successful employee service award luncheon last week. Uh, we had 150 of our 230 full-time employees attend, um, which equates to just about every full-time employee was on duty last week, so that, so that was very positive. I did want to thank the organizing committee. And, and just so you know, the, the employee service awards recognize years of service, but really more importantly, they, they recognize the service that people provide, our employees provide to the city. Uh, five, 10, 15, 20, and 25 years. Multi department organizing committee, um, made up of Amanda O'Donnell, Carlos Aguilar, Arisia Hester, Darren Yule, uh, Katerina Woodson, Monse Palacios, Sean Green, Jose Gonzalez, Nicole Grant, Minerva Hernandez, and led by Ryan Delgado. So thank you for that group, for putting it together. Um, we recognized about 30 of our full-time employees for their years of service, and I just wanted to highlight the, um, seven, um, I'm, yeah, the seven members who received 25-year service awards are all from police and fire. So that speaks to the longevity and, and service in those departments. Jaime Bermudez, a police lieutenant, um, and again, these are all 25-year award, awardees. Police Sergeant Tony De La Rambla, um, John Gritsmacher from the fire department, fire captain Daniel Kim, police lieutenant, Scott Martinez, fire captain, Jeffrey Rudolph, police officer, and Kenneth Schultz, fire engineer. Congratulations to those folks, and, uh, that is my report for tonight.
Thank you. And yes, congratulations to them. City attorney?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Briefly touched on this before, that Sacramento had 15 new housing bills last year, all of which I've read at least a couple of times, some of which I receive, I understand partially. Um, some of which are really ambiguous as to how they'll be applied, but the bottom line is that Sacramento, and, and for, I would say, the better part of two decades, they were putting out requirements that cities have regional housing needs assessments for purposes of requiring cities to have affordable housing. And when I say affordable, that's not someone saying, I wish a house was 500,000 versus a million. We're talking about affordability based upon, um, income and very reduced housing costs. And so Sacramento is going weary of cities saying they will do things and are starting to become proactive in making cities do things. And, um, there are potential of fines, um, having your house, your general plan frozen in place, if you will, different things, but really, um, even they're realizing those threats probably don't mean much. And so currently, there's a, a, a bill that's... And so currently there's a, a, a bill that's pending that would, um, basically allow properties that are voned, that are zoned residential, they're within a certain distance of transit, quarter mile, um, that someone could build on that property, virtually 150-story, um, residential building, um, without any city approval. Now, do I think that's going to pass? Probably not. But, um, it, it does tell me that they're getting more and more aggressive about affordable housing. And that we may very well see this year some sort of housing bill where the city will find its rights taken away from it.
Again.
Again, and be required to build, um, housing projects, if you will, like you've seen in, uh, in New York or other places. Now, will that happen? And would that, would somebody actually do that in El Segundo? I don't know. I don't know the, the mechanics of it or, or the, or whether that would pencil out. But, um, that's what they're working on. And we need to watch that closely. We've already put out a letter opposing that bill. But these things are happening very rapidly up in Sacramento. And I don't think most of the people in California have any ideas to what's going on.
So. What if a city's residential area is built out? Will they force that in a non-residential area?
Not so far, but not so far. And, but, um, even if you're built out, it might be worth it for a developer to go in and buy half a dozen lots, consolidate them, and build a very large, high-story, multi-story building on it. These are the, and without any real city approval process. Now, again, this is a pretty ambitious bill that's sitting up there. I don't think it'll pass.
They did it with the ADU. What's to stop this?
This is a little more aggressive than that.
There's quite a few people against it.
There are. I mean, there, there's a lot of people against a lot of bills in Sacramento. But the housing seems to be a very big focus of theirs at the moment. And they're frustrated by cities not building affordable housing. So they're getting more aggressive about requiring it.
What's that bill number?
I'll tell you, I can't remember at the moment. I know what it says, but I can't tell you the number. There's so many bills, the numbers get lost. But, um, I'm, I'm keeping track of it best I can. And I will keep the council informed. But it's, um, you know, significant issue to all cities.
There's been quite a few articles in the Times recently.
Well, there's a Cog meeting Thursday. I'm sure Jeff Kirnen will have a report from the league.
Right. So I just, it, to me though, whether that bill passes or not, I think it's a significant sign that they are getting very serious about forcing, not cramming down the throats of cities, affordable housing. I'm not just talking about housing. I'm talking about affordable housing, low-cost housing.
Right. It has a legal definition.
Right. So I don't want people to, you know, there's a distinction between what's affordable and what low-cost housing is. Anyway, it's, uh, interesting times. I will keep you all updated. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk?
Nothing this evening.
Okay. We heard from our city treasurer earlier this evening. Council member Bran is not here. Council member Persick?
I just want to remind, let everyone know about the Battle of the Badges with the police against the, um, fire on March 25th. Make sure tickets will be going on sale soon. I know the chiefs will be cheering either coaching or doing a cheerleading routine at halftime. So we're excited about that. So, um, please make sure you come out and watch the chiefs do their cheerleading routine. Thank you.
Council member Dugan?
I think Chief Donovan owns the paint. That's all I'll say. So I'm not going in there. So I'll pass.
Mayor Protem Boils?
Real, uh, quick plug. I'm proud of my girls U-14, AYSO All-Stars team. We qualified for Riverside. We're off March 10th and 11th. We'll do our best to represent El Segundo. And Manhattan Beach is the one to watch, unfortunately. So we'll see.
That's a wonderful group of young women I, I've seen you with. You brought them to the Lakers game and we wish them well. We're looking for them to come back with a trophy. Let's see. Since we last met, I attended the aquatics subcommittee meeting with council member Persick. Also attended the joint aerospace hearing that I mentioned last time with State Senator Ben Allen and State Senator Scott Wilk. Mayor Protem was there. Dr. Bran was there. Carol was there. Was that not several well-spent hours about not just the aerospace industry in our region that's vital to our economy, but also educating young people? Getting them engaged at a very young age to want to study that. And we learned some really, um, probably sad statistics about being able to get into engineering school in the United States. Or, or excuse me, in California, UCLA accepted 800 students out of 13,000. Wasn't it for engineering?
It was crazy. And then the other thing was the issue with the, getting the clearances once they did get a job. Once, once people graduated and got a job, getting clearances in a timely manner was also a, a major concern for people.
But it was, it was fascinating. They pulled together a really wonderful pa, there were, I think, three panels. First was the Aerospace Corporation and Boeing about talent acquisition and retention. And then there were the, the universities, UCLA, USC. Cal States were there. It was great. And then there was a panel that a Da Vinci representative, Steve Wallace, who's the, the principal for Da Vinci Science. But it was, it's fascinating. So, and it's online. If you go to Senator Allen's website, it's there. So if you have a couple, three extra hours, you want to learn a lot about our system here, I, I encourage you to do that. I was also, I was not happy to hear that UC doesn't allow ITAR research, which is international trade and arms regulation because they want to, they say that the research has to be available to every student. And so to do that, they would have to be US students. So, um, I voiced my opinion about that. I think that we should, the UC schools should be doing ITAR research because we're American. So, you know, there's always ways to filter out people. Let's see. I attended the government and military affairs chamber meeting with the city manager. I attended a ribbon cutting for El Segundo Modern Industry with council member Persick. Disaster council meeting we had and love to have Randy Collins come talk to us about disaster preparedness. You know, he works closely with, with both our fire department and our, our police department. As we heard earlier this evening from Pastor Carlisle about the tragedy in, in Florida. We work on that all the time here. Our public safety, the mayor Protem and I have, have meetings to make sure that, um, we're adequately prepared. Our, our police and our fire, they have tabletops. They have drills about active shooters with the schools and the businesses in town. So even though it's, it's pretty quiet, please know that it's being worked on all the time by our, our public safety. See, I attended a South Bay Aerospace Alliance meeting. The, oh, and then upcoming this Friday, the South Bay Lakers are going to dedicate a basketball hoop at Station 3. So that'll be, I mean, Station 3, Station 2. It's the new station. It's the stealth station. I've been meaning to tell you guys. Sorry. Um, Station 2. And also Monday, the, the 26th, El Segundo Middle School is having a ceremony for their, their schools to watch. They were selected as a school to watch. So that's, that's very big for our city. So, um, with that, we'll go back to public communications.
Hi there. I'm Melissa McCavity. Um, I live on West Maple Avenue and I've spoken to you guys a few times in the past, um, few months. And I did email all of you today. Um, I think it's great that you are postponing the process a little bit to look more in-depth. I started my email to you all today and I'm really just up here so that the people behind us and the people watching on TV can hear as well, especially in this climate with city council elections coming up. When each and every one of you took your oath of office before stepping foot on the dais, you pledged to support and defend the United States and California constitutions against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And you vowed to bear true faith and allegiance to both of those constitutions. You took that obligation freely, without mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and you said you would well and faithfully discharge the duties upon you, which you are about to enter. I really hope that as you sit here in your last two months, you keep that close to your heart because I appreciate that you've done something for six years and you want to see it to fruition. But that is not a reason to do something, especially for a city that you're not going to be living in any further. To me, that doesn't make sense. And all I can say to you is I thank you for your service. I'm not going to get into my email and be that redundant because it was very similar to what a lot of the people here were saying. But there's just no point in not looking at the pros and cons of seeking out a more thorough plan. Otherwise, you're going to put us in a similar boat that we were in with this pool where a prior council bound them to a very vague term. And that is just not how contracts should be written at all. I did speak to the $5 million loan, um, or whatever you want to call it. It's unfathomable to not ask for that money back. Our own city website today that I was Googling, I too was watching old city council meetings, which is where I found the oath. It was not so easy to find because it's not written out anywhere. I had to actually watch you. And I did. I went back and watched each of you get sworn in. Um, and here we are today. Your committees, commissions, and board pages are so outdated. It shows term expirations in 2016. Your government services pages still show Don Canaby as the county supervisor representing our district. Perhaps instead of contemplating forgiving a $5 million loan, you could collect upon it and use those, the money to update the websites for a start. Further, as PTA president at Richmond Street School, I am appalled that we are using school funds towards this pool. We could also use some of that $5 million to, um, help our school, who does not receive charter grants and does not receive a lot of money from the state. Um, our school district is using the limited funds we have and we desperately need school repairs and safety procedures. So please, please remember your oath. Thank you.
Lee Davis, 204 West Sicamar. Wasn't able to complete everything that I really wanted to say. But the one thing going through the myriad of comments on the golf course is that, uh, it, it actually raised more questions and has more information. We talked about a lease agreement. I had no idea that there were some tax ramifications. We need to sit down and really vet this program. We need to understand what the attorneys have to say, what we're trying to do. Make sure it works with everyone else. So please, it, it's imperative. The other thing that I, I didn't get a finish with was that very simply, as a member of the South Bay Sports Health and Recreation, that's trying to get donations for the aquatics, uh, facility, which is, as we all know, the best thing that was going to happen for aquatics in El Segundo, is that if I'm asking people for donations for a parks and rec facility and we do not repay a loan or forgive a loan, and, I'm sorry, but the accounting was given to us, it is a loan debt. And that's the information we were given at the task force. If we're going to change accounting, that's something else that's great to know. I would love to have you direct us to change the accounting. So it's there shown, but it has to be part of the process. Please give us clear information and clear direction. If you want to change the accounting process, great. But it is currently stated as a $5.6 million loan that was to be paid back, and that's the information we got and that's what we're trying to do. We need to ask for it. If we relieve it, there's going to be people that are donating and say, why should I donate or put anything towards the city when you guys are giving up on stuff that has already been processed? So please, sit down and, and, and get us on the same page. Take the time. Let's do it right. Thank you very much.
Lance Rawls, El Segundo resident, Main Street. A long night. Mike, I appreciate what you said about just doing this right. That's all any of us wanted, um, is to make sure this is right. Uh, I echo the sentiments. Mayor Fuentes, I, I know it's been a long road for you for the six years. There's a lot to be discussed about that. But it's, it is about the city of El Segundo and it is about its residents. And not one person making a decision, but all of you up there making a decision for us. We have newly elected officials coming soon. It'll be elected by us. And that is super important to, to me. And I know what it is to you too. I, I know that it's important that we get it right for the residents and it's not about one person. Mike, as far as the loan payment stuff, I, all I can do is say what the city attorney or the, the financial person for the city says. And if we change that, great. At least point, great. If, if it's changed and deemed that it wasn't a $5 million loan, $5.6 million loan, okay. But everything I've seen and, and understanding it is it's still something that needs to be repaid back. It's something that we could have gotten back and we should get back. And we should make sure that, that that is repaid and that's part of this. I always thought that the previous stuff was poorly stated. Uh, it should have been a save the lakes slogan to truly save it. I'd hate to see the lakes go to something else. But this needs to make money, whatever it is. And it doesn't need to be a drain to drew your point of 5% to 10% of our residents using it. It's, it's crazy. If it was something that's supposed to make money and 10% of our residents use it, it needs to make money. It needs to, to have the right thing. So anyways, that's all I've got. But, uh, those are the key points for me is, is to get this right. Uh, I love the point about the 34 days. That is not enough in any capacity. And, and I think, and Mayor Fuentes, you didn't address it. You, you put a timeline out there in October, November. I get it. But now that we see the, the data on paper, black and white, the 34 days is not enough in anybody's world, like you said, that has done RFPs. So we are where we are. How we got here is a different story. But there's no way that we should go forward with that 34 days, even with the new timeline that's there. So, um, I'm glad and happy to hear that you guys are going to take the right time for the citizens of El Segundo. So thank you.
Julie Stolnak, 1009 East Walnut. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but I wanted to speak on two things. I had to cringe when I heard, could we possibly sell it? I, I don't think that should be an option. I think we, we are getting rid of too much green space and we can't build more land. And, um, I don't think that the city should lose control of that property. The other thing that I saw that was on the agenda was about council approving an ordinance for a new city logo. And I have brought this up a couple of times. Um, I brought it up to Mayor Fuentes at one time. And I brought it up also in the survey that went out about the city seal. To me, being a lifelong resident here and a member of the police family with my husband being an officer here, it's very important to me that if we do a new city seal, that those four stars, four stars, remain on that city seal. A lot of people don't know what those four stars stand for. And, um, I know they're not on the Centennial logo, but I really feel that they should remain on the city logo, no matter what we do. Those four stars represent the four police lives that have been lost in the line of duty in this city. And I just wanted that to go on public record, that I want those four stars to remain no matter what our logo turns out to be. Thank you.
Seeing no more public communications. We are adjourned. 10:23.